That all council members are present, we will commence the West Sacramento City Council, West Sacramento City, uh, West Sacramento Redevelopment Accessory Agency and West Sacramento Finance and Authorities December eighth meeting. Uh, we will proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Ms. Karen Larson, our Health and Human Services Agency Director for Yolo County. Thank you, Karen, for being, for leading us.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Karen, so much. The city council meeting will be conducted by a teleconference pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five three E. The city council adopted Resolution twenty one eighty confirming that a statewide state of emergency continues to exist because of COVID nineteen virus pandemic and that Yolo County Public Health Officer continues to recommend measures to promote social distancing. The council and city staff shall take all actions required by Section five four nine five three to protect public access and right to comment. Members of the public are asked to watch the meeting via live stream on the city's website or via wave cable channel twenty. We will have live public comment um here on the Zoom and we will continue to receive written public comment. And all comments received by six P M um will be provided to the city council and posted on the website. To provide live com- comment during the meeting, join the meeting using the Zoom meeting hyperlink or the phone number listed on the city's website. I'll request public comment during item one A prior to the first item on the consent or after the staff presentation or any other item in the agenda. Once I've announced the public comment period, if you would like to make a comment, please do one of the following. If you're joining the meeting via Zoom, press the raise hand button or two, if you're joining the meeting by phone, press star nine when it is your turn to comment. The clerk will call you by name or phone number and will unmute your microphone. Each person will be allowed three minutes and the clerk will notify you when you have thirty seconds remaining to wrap up your comments. And once your three minutes of public comment has ended, you will be muted again. You may also join by phone dialing one six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight, ID number nine two zero nine five six four two nine three five, under passcode zero zero four two six four. Uh, city attorney, please provide a report on the closed session.
Yes, the council met in closed session to discuss one item of existing litigation identified in your agenda. No reportable action was taken.
Okay, thank you. Um, and next we have an update by our city manager um related to tonight's agenda. City manager, can you provide an update?
Uh, yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Uh, just wanted to uh bring your attention to a couple items. One, first note that the council received an errata memo earlier today to make a few minor changes to items ten, nineteen and twenty. Uh, those changes are detailed in the memo. Uh, and then with regard to the agenda tonight, on behalf of staff, I'm requesting a few changes to the handling of agenda items on the regular agenda. Uh, first with item number twenty, which is the mid-year budget update. Uh, we're requesting that we move that item up to the beginning of the regular agenda uh immediately following the consent agenda. Uh, no vote is required to make that change to the agenda. Uh, next on item fifteen, uh, which is the water conservation ordinance, we are requesting that item to be continued uh to the January nineteenth meeting, just to allow some more time for outreach on that item. Um, a vote by the council will be required to continue that item, but when we reach item fifteen, um, our community development director uh will, will remind you of that and you can, you can do that at that time. And then finally, agenda item seventeen, which was related to C D B G, uh, that item was inadvertently listed as a regular agenda item instead of a public hearing um as required for that action. So we, we have a, uh, we have time to make the correction um and will be renoticing the item as a public hearing and scheduling for the January nineteenth meeting. Uh, no vote is required to make that change to the agenda. We're simply removing the item uh from tonight's agenda. So, um, those are the changes requested. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions among um council members on the changes tonight? No? Okay, thank you. So next we'll move um to item one A, which are presentations by the public on matters not included on the agenda. And council members are prohibited from discussing any matters that are presented to us. Madam Clerk, do we have anything in writing or live public comment request?
I don't see anything live, um, but I'll double check. There was two written. They're posted on the website. Um, and you guys also got that memo.
Uh, Mayor, we do have Maria Geralda uh has a uh request or hand up.
Okay. I did. I don't see it here. I don't see.
I don't see it either.
Uh, Maria, can, can, um, madam clerk, can you unmute so she can speak if she wants to present?
She's ready to go now.
Okay, go ahead. Oh, there she is.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Uh, greetings from uh Bike Dog Brewery. We are having our River City Democratic Club Annual uh Christmas Gathering. And I wanted to comment, Madam Mayor, uh, that in the uh city attorney's report, the uh city attorney did not mention, and I wonder if it's not a violation of the dog, of the, of the uh law, uh, that uh the lawsuit that we uh filed regarding the uh district elections has been answered. And so we did file, we did receive the answer to the lawsuit that we filed. And so I think the public has the right to know that an answer has been uh filed. And so I'm not sure why uh this, this secrecy uh to the public. And so anyway, I wanted the public to know that the city has, is being sued because of district elections and that the city has now answered the lawsuit. Okay? That is one thing. Uh, and the other thing is, uh, sorry, I don't have a timer in front of me. Um, and the other thing is, the last meeting, uh, it went on past eleven thirty. I actually fell asleep uh while I was listening to it. I'm not sure why two heavy subject matters were discussed in the agenda. Uh, at the same time, uh, the, uh, the, uh, what was it? The Project Home Run or whatever it was and the budget. At the same time, it really was not realistic to put two things. It was after midnight, uh, I think, because I fell asleep and it's not realistic uh for the public to be able to attend and participate. And uh, I don't know if that was some type of initiation for our new uh council member because it was really tiring. I don't know how anybody can think clearly uh at, at eleven thirty, twelve thirty. I remember when I was in college, we were very careful what we put on our plate. We always took a couple of heavy subjects and a couple of, of lightweight subjects. So we never put on a heavy, heavy.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. So anyway, please, Madam Mayor, don't allow such uh, uh, an agenda, heavy agenda again. Thank you so much.
Madam Clerk, are there any other requests to speak?
I see hand up from Scott Rafferty. I'm going to go ahead and allow him to talk.
Yes.
Go ahead, Scott.
Uh, hello. Uh, yes, I am Ms. Geralva's attorney and I'd like to echo some of the uh concerns that she raised. West Sacramento was one of the first cities to simply ignore a um a, a petition to comply voluntarily with the C V R A uh more than two years ago. Uh, and I think it's time you post that petition and let members of the public uh comment on it in open session. Uh, your city attorney has delayed this again and again and again, and it's not going to go away. Um, in fact, just yesterday, I uh called him and he accused me of lying to the council. He wouldn't provide any details and he hung up. So you've made it very difficult to settle this. Uh, you probably need a new city attorney uh just, just to get the business done. Uh, and uh, that's unfortunate. Uh, no other city has filed an answer uh where they uh seek to get attorney's fees against a citizen uh on this type of case. It's practically impossible. The statute says that that requires a showing of complete lack of foundation. This is a very well-grounded case. That's why you, your, your city attorney has chosen to keep it from the public. It's time to, to comply. It's time to be open. This should have been on the agenda this evening. We're not going to let you play for time anymore. We can't. It's gotta happen in the next election. Uh, there was an election this year that was at large. Uh, it can never happen again. So, um, I hope you move forward. Uh, as I said, you've made it very difficult to settle this case. We've been trying for two years. Uh, so there's a really uh no option at this point, but the very costly and unnecessary litigation to make the point that West Sacramento will not be the first city in the history of the state of California to avoid and violate the C V R A without consequence. So I would uh hope that this can be changed. You need to call a special meeting very quickly or this is, this lawsuit is just going to become an expensive and utterly futile exercise for the.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you very much. Bye.
Okay. Time. Are there any other requests to speak? Oh, sorry, Scott, are you still going?
No, I'm, I thank you.
Okay.
I don't see any more persons wanting to speak.
Thank you. Okay, we are done with public comment. Next is item one B, council communications from our assignments. Are there any um updates from our council members? Council member Roscoe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District met this morning. Uh, we discussed a, uh, we had a discussion of possible adoption of a direction to staff on our Bio Generation Facility Project, R F P. In addition, received the update of the long-term financial plan and approved the capital funding projection for Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District fiscal years twenty one through twenty two through twenty thirty to thirty one. Some of the highlights include that we are in excellent financial condition. I always actually look forward to this report um in reading the, the documents uh because uh Regional Sand has done some pretty good things when it comes to ensuring that we pay off debt early and that we're not incurring um so much uh debt service. Uh, so the debt restructuring replacements has generated over a hundred twelve million in total cash flow savings since two thousand and ten. Our reserves, uh, we have healthy reserves uh that would allow us to deal with asset replacements, emergencies, general operating cost fluctuations. And the Echo Water Project continues to make progress towards completion. That's the really big project that we've been working on and talking about for the last several years. Currently, uh, they've begun operations on the bio- biological nutrient removal facility. I think the, the, um, most important is that monthly service rates are projected to remain level uh at thirty seven dollars a month for the next several years and that, um, you know, oftentimes that, that's not, not normally the case. You see incremental increases over the years uh with utilities. And we have as a, as a board of directors, really it signaled that we prioritize that. So it's good to hear that we are sticking to that, to that commitment. Um, so anyhow, I, I just, I, when I see these uh presentations and receive the information on these presentations, it really does make me happy. Think that, you know, we as a city, you know, we're keeping healthy reserves. We are uh talking about a general fund sustainability strategy proposal uh in line with good governance. And I think um both Regional Sand and the city of West Sacramento are, are doing a great job there. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protemla Desma.
Actually don't have anything. We are, uh, I thought we, I had some other meetings with Y C T D, uh, just offline, uh, meetings with them and Caltrans that went very well, uh, related to our Yolo uh bypass and causeway, uh, Caltrans, uh, project. So other than that, really nothing more to report.
Say Cog Transportation Committee?
Um, I don't recall having that meeting. I'm sorry. I'll come back to that.
Okay.
You reminded me. I forgot about that one.
Okay, that's fine. Um. And council member, yes, council member.
I apologize. I just, I forgot to give, uh, uh, I just wanted to say thank you, the mayor Protem, uh, Ledesma. Uh, today I had several witnesses uh take the stand for a trial that I'm in and he was able to tap out for me as my alternate at Regional Sand about an hour in. And I just appreciate the, the, you know, teamwork here. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So I did attend the Cog meeting uh last week and I'll come up with the agenda. I'm letting you know. But uh, there was really uh just a, a couple of small votes, but I'll inform the, the board, uh, the rest of the council offline. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And council member Alcala?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Safe the Meeting on November eighteenth along with, um, council member Ledesma. We did have closed session, but there was no reportable act that, that was taken. Um, we have consideration of Resolution twenty one eleven dash oh one, which is really um an adoption of continuing our, our meetings via teleconference. And this is in consideration of circumstances um on the state of emergency and the recommendation of our county, Yolo County Public Health officer, which wants us to continue to follow measures um to promote social distancing. We did have the minutes for the October twenty twenty first meeting, um, which were, was Safe the Project Updates. Paul Dirksen highlighted receiving um a settlement check from Time Oil as well as federal project environmental document timelines, um, consideration of L P P As and P P As in December, federal project designs and federal advocacy. Uh, Greg Faber, our Greg Faber reported on a bi- bipartisan infrastructure bill. And it's unclear if the U S A C E has enough projects in the pipeline ready um to receive this funding. But uh, these projects will possibly get full funding, um, which also means full funding for the entire project. Um, there was a budget presentation which is online on the Safe, the, the Safe the um site. And there will be another with Safe the Meeting on December sixteenth. And tomorrow I will be attending the Yolo Local Agency Formation um Commission Meeting at nine A M. And that's all. Oh, excuse me, Mayor, actually, um, attends the two by two, but you're going to be giving that um two by two with the city and school district, which will be giving that presentation. Thank you.
You're welcome. And no other updates? Okay, Cog Board met on November eighteenth and some of these um updates were shared when I provided um my transportation committee update last month. Um, so these actions uh were following meeting that were taken by the board. I'll be brief. We approved the federal transportation transit, transit, uh, sorry, federal transit administration, American Rescue Plan stimulus funding at the twelve percent discretionary share programming for the Cog region. Approved the Transportation Development Act claim for Yolo County, um, which is for fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, one point nine eight million. And we received information on the community, community economic resilience fund, which is a one-time use of American Rescue Plan Act funds with, that will distribute six hundred million in, in a competitive process to regions across California. The program will um fund planning and implementation efforts to help communities economically recover from COVID uh pandemic and advance the transition to a carbon neutral economy. And Valley Vision provided a special presentation um to Cog members regarding the fund. And I'll try to get a copy of that and share it with you. I think it's um a very important presentation for us to keep track of. We also received um an extensive workshop on local policy changes uh that can facilitate infill housing development in green zones. As you know, our riverfront area is the highlight of that in West Sacramento. And um, we supported in collaboration with Cog, who was the sponsor. Um, the Green Means Go funding, which is thirty eight million in state funding. So the, the green zones help achieve um housing and climate goals. And um, so we have a component of that here in our riverfront. And uh, the Green Means Go will kickstart, um, uh, well, we, we're kickstarting discussions now. And um, in the meantime, the California Housing and Community Development Department is preparing draft guidelines. So uh, Cog is helping cities um to focus on what policy changes need to be made, including some cities that will have to adopt resolutions and we'll, we'll take a look at that. Um, and we're also um being tasked to provide to the chair, um, Chair Gore, any, any initiatives that I, which I think um West Sacramento has been on the forefront, um, leading that effort. So I think we have a number and I may, I may just, and we had um Erin provide a component of that presentation. So I just want to applaud Erin to, you know, who was a part of that discussion um and shared what we're doing. So, you know, Erin, I think, I think I'm just going to say, go back to Erin's presentation, Chair Gore. We've already done a lot of that. Um, and, and in addition to that, um, we were, we received a director's update. Um, we are informed that the historic investment in infrastructure, which includes critical transportation funding, a new five-year surface transportation authorization with more funding and some changes. And there's a big emphasis on funding for climate and equity programs. On November nineteenth, the Race Equity and Inclusion Working Group convened and we had an extensive discussion, um, which is now being carried into the next meeting. Um, is, and the reason for that, I want to explain that we have a combination of um community partners from um nonprofit organizations um and, and various organizations throughout the region and Cog Board members um addressing um Cog's racial equity statement of change and commitment. Uh, and I just really applaud um Rick Jennings as the chair, who is really allowing a lot of robust discussion um and making sure that um we, we are um providing a substantive um remark and um statement as we move forward. On December sixth, the city county two by two um met to discuss various items, including COVID nineteen rates and vaccination stats. And we are still on track improving our rates. As of last week, um, of the nine five six nine one area code, sixty three percent are vaccinated. Um, and then in the nine five six oh five, um, sorry, area code zip code, forty nine percent. So it's still continuing to lag, but um, we, you know, we just continue to move forward. And the rates of children five through eleven receiving the first dose are pretty good so far. Um, they gave us an update on um the Omicron um virus and, and kind of like the, you know, how they're tracking it. And we have the capacity to track it here in Yolo County. Um, testing in city hall is also being extended with the support of the county who took action yesterday to approve um an additional, you know, funding. Um, so, you know, we are benefiting from that. And uh, we're also going to provide a matching fund um as we move forward on that. And I think Erin, you can follow up with Erin on getting those details. The county also um shared uh what their art funding plan is. Um, and they had a meeting yesterday in the board meeting and looked over um a couple of ideas that we have shared and we will get funding from, which is for our homelessness programs. Um, and uh, so it looks positive that we are going to get that funding. Um, that wasn't approved yesterday, but they're receiving presentations. They're incredibly impressed with all of our homelessness um services, including downtown streets team. Um, you know, the Mental Health Services Act, um, housing program, Mercy Housing. Um, also uh, Project Home Key and Room Key and all the uh Mercy, you know, Coalition and all the organizations. Um, St. Vincent de Paul, Yola Children's Alliance and all the organizations here locally that have been pitching in and providing us some support to address homelessness here in the city. And then later in the day, we had a city school two by two meeting and um council member Alcala, feel free to, you know, chime in if I missed anything. Um, we received a very positive, you know, update that there are zero COVID cases since they have returned to school. Um, the testing and vaccinations are continuing to progress well um as they are taking place on the school sites. And we will share our resources for testing at city hall when the schools closed over the holidays. Um, Erin informed us that um they decided to keep city hall open to do COVID testing. Uh, when the city um is, uh, staff go on their break during the Christmas holidays, they're going to allow to continue testing in city hall. Um, in addition, we, um, and by the way, this is a critical time of year where we, we're being notified um that, uh, you know, as we um travel or engage in family gatherings, um, the uh ability for COVID to spread is much higher. Um, so, you know, testing is incredibly important as we, you know, encourage people before they return back to school to get tested. Um, that way we can keep track. So I'm really um hoping to push the uh COVID testing among the schools. And if you could all share that in your um social media, that would be great. Um, in addition, we received a, a couple of um updates on the home run program, shared possible modification of summer internship program and reviewed the intersection of the home run with Universal Presidential Kindergarten. Um, uh, trustee um Wong is very interested as a first five. Uh, who, member who is front and center, who's listening to the implementation of Universal um Presidential Kindergarten and the benefit that we can gain by expanding that here in West Sacramento. Um, it's an opportunity that, you know, we shouldn't um dismiss. It's a, we are well um structured. Uh, there's some of the things that I've raised are the rates, you know, making sure that those rates, you know, reimburse childcare providers um well enough or competitively enough with those uh that are being funded privately. So we are still waiting for guidance and funding to these, to determine next steps. And with that, that includes all of the, not really concludes, we've done a lot more things outside. You know, Mayor Protem and I continue to work on things um together. Um, and in addition to that, I just want to add that we did have a meeting um with Caltrans um to discuss uh the I Street Bridge funding and um it looks promising. So um, we'll, you know, you know, continue. If you have any questions, feel free to, you know, check in with the city manager. It looks promising that we hopefully will get that funding to continue to build the I Street Bridge. Um, next, yes.
The only thing that I would, I would add to the two by two that you had around the COVID cases, um, for kids.
Yes.
Tested positive for, for COVID. I, I know this because I've received several others as a parent. Um, but I, but I think what it is, is that they haven't originated from the school. I think if I'm guessing, that's maybe what that, that nuance there is.
Yeah, we didn't, I didn't get that nuance from the conversation.
I can share with you the letters.
Okay, good to know.
Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll jump back in and give you this quick briefing because.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, on the Transportation Committee, which was last uh Thursday, and thank you for the reminder. Um, but there were a couple of things we voted on. I did want to bring up, you, you touched on one of the items, which was uh Chair Gore's challenge uh to the Cog Board about uh riverfront um, um, and how we're dealing with uh accommodating our housing need. And so again, um, I didn't have to speak much, but I did, I wanted to make sure we did weigh in. I know Erin, our city manager, did a great job on the highlight on the greater a Cog Board meeting a couple of weeks ago, which I caught a little bit of, of him and he represents the city really well and understanding how far ahead of the game we are on, on our housing needs and achieving those. Uh, but I did use the opportunity to ensure that they understood that uh this, this council has continued at a policy level, uh, furthering that. So it is a good discussion. I appreciate Chair Gore's uh challenge on that. And um, uh, Mayor, you can, you can continue to fight on the greater board meeting when you get there. Um, and also we take, uh, we, we had a couple of action items. One is that uh authorize an amendment to a, a design grant uh that is out with the city winters. And then as we approve the regional transportation improvement program, the R KIP program, um, which was there. And finally, there is a release of the draft regional trail network uh for the Sacramento region, Parks and Trails Strategic Development Plan, which is nothing more than a really, really broad look at the region's uh trail network and bike trail network across the region, looking to identify gaps and how Cog can help uh further uh improve uh the trail network across uh, uh, across uh our region. And I did take the opportunity to highlight the great work we've done uh in West Sacramento, how important trails are. Went to the, the levy behind me and our river uh front trail system that we have. And you brought up the I Street Bridge uh replacement and I made a pitch for the, how important the actual I Street uh replacement or the I Street um conversion uh that would, will, is to our region, particularly to uh the Broderick and Washington neighborhoods uh as a, as a protocol pedestrian bike crossing. Um, and there was some really good discussion there between agencies. Uh, Rancho Cordova brought up some um, uh, kind of issues around the role Cog to help play in bridging gaps uh between agencies, Sacramento or Sac County or whomever. And uh, so there's a really just good discussion here. Uh, we have just main one, one uh agency we, we, we have to reckon with every now and then, and that's Sacramento City. Um, as we try to get rail crossings and everything else with them, um, I think the rest of Yolo County, we have a good partnership with. Uh, but Cog has played that role already. And so, um, anyways, a really good discussion about, uh, again, uh, about the trail network and uh West Sac continues to shine in all those areas. So that's my update. Thanks for the reminder again.
Absolutely. Next item is item one C. We have no appointments. And next under presentation is consideration of the selection of a mayor pro tem. So at this point, I will accept a, a recommendation.
I would like to recommend, oh, Chris Ledesma. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, yes, I mean, you were, you were quick on the button and that is, and that is okay. It sounds like we're going to have to have a discussion though, council member Alcola.
Okay, I was going to nominate um Chris Ledesma. I think he's done a great job as our pro tem and I hope he accepts that nomination.
And, and I was actually going to nominate council member Roscoe. That sounds like maybe we should have a discussion.
Well, uh, all this discussion, the fact that, uh, first of all, council member Alcala, thank you for saying I've done a great job, even though I forgot I attended the meeting last Thursday. So, um, uh, but I attended the meeting. I, I didn't forget the meeting. I forgot to tell you about the meeting. Uh, but honestly, uh, I appreciate your vote of confidence. Um, I think in a year uh where we obviously had some transition, um, I think in a year where we obviously had some transition with the new mayor and the new council members. And I, I respectfully will decline taking a mayor pro tem. Just as there, we have new council members and I appreciate all you, what you all bring to the table. And I, I'm ready to sort of this it back and be a council member again. Our mayor has luckily attends just about everything. So I'm going to have a chair meeting in the Zoom environment. So it has, it's been a relatively. Air free or, or, or easy. Role being mayor pro tem, but I, I'm always available to each of you. In a role as you, we bring up ad hoc. Committees or whatever else, I'm always ready to serve at your, at your pleasure in those roles. But for now, I think it's best to allow our new, newer and others to have a, have a role in leadership for council. So thank you, Councilmember Alcala.
Member Alcala, will you withdraw your motion?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, we have, so we'll take up another motion at this time?
So I'm going to make this motion.
Sure.
Withdraw the other motion. I'm unmuted. And, and so I, I'm motioning to nominate Councilmember Roscoe. For me, I'm, I'm really excited. I appreciate the work that Councilmember Ledesma has done. Hopefully, Councilmember Roscoe, this is something you're, you're willing to step up and do. I know that historically it has largely been. If for whatever reason, Madam Mayor, it doesn't attend the meeting, then, then Vice Mayor. Will or Mayor Pro Tem will, will, will step up and lead the meeting. But I'm, I'm hopeful and looking forward to. If, if Councilmember Roscoe does choose to accept this nomination, I'm seeing you two work together. I think the, the dynamic partnership that both of you will bring here, I'm really excited about. I'm excited for our community. I know both of you are beloved by West Sacramentoans. And so I, I'm really excited for the potential of, of what this could be. So I nominate Councilmember Roscoe and hopefully you say yes.
Hi, Councilmember Early West, I appreciate it very much and thank you so much for honoring me with those words. I, I would be delighted to accept your nomination.
And I will second the nomination.
Okay, I just want to. Add Mayor Portem Ledesma, thank you so much for serving. You've done a great job as a mayor pro tem. Being engaged on, on various discussion items, budget sustainability being our biggest topic, which we're taking up tonight. And, and helping to shepherd along some, you know, transition as we had me coming on as mayor. And bringing in a fortitude of collaboration. And, and your genuine, you know, initiative to work, you know, together with all the council members. Has been greatly appreciated and I look forward to working with Councilmember Roscoe in the same effort, you know, to be able to continue in that transition. And work collaboratively as we move forward in my second year as mayor here in West Sacramento. So. Yes, Councilmember Alcala.
Sorry, please, please continue, but I would like to say something about Councilmember Ledesma as well.
Okay, thank you. So yes, I'm just looking forward to working with you, Councilmember Roscoe. You, you and I have, I think, a lot in common. And I think that, I think the administration will look forward to working our, with our partnership, working together and serving the community. And Councilmember Alcala?
I just wanted also to thank you, Councilmember Ledesma. There were meetings I attended where I really didn't know what was going on and you were always very patient. You never lost, you know, cool with me. And you've also on this council been incredibly informative and you have had the kind of temperament. That is just, it says volumes about what statesmanship is about. So thank you very much for having served in that capacity. That's all.
Thank you very much. I don't know what to say to that, but thank you very much. It's very kind words and. I appreciate the respect and that all of you paid. And I respect all your roles and, and as part of this community, so I'm a little touched by that. So thank you. And also I'm not going anywhere. I'm just going to sit back and be a council member. There's things. That I, again, that I stand for and want to see happen too, like the bridge behind me, which I appreciate. The mayor continuing to work with city and staff and to make sure that gets done. So anyway, so thank you for the kind words.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please call the roll.
So just to confirm, the motion is Councilmember Early. The second is Mayor Pro Tem Ledesma calling the role Councilmember Roscoe.
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ledesma?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mayor Portem Roscoe. And this is unanimous and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I, I thank you very much. For the vote of confidence. I also wanted to say something about my brilliant and visionary colleague. Former Mayor Pro Tem Ledesma. I've had the honor of serving with you twice while you were the mayor pro tem. What's in a title? Because frankly, I think that you're forever mayor pro tem. You're definitely the longest. City council, a serving city council member in the city that's on this council now. And we all have learned a great deal from you. And I know I can speak from even past and prior colleagues who say that they really do respect. Your knowledge, your wisdom, as, as Councilmember Alcala mentioned, your statesmanship. And frankly, it's an honor to serve with you. So I hope that I can fill those shoes. And at the same time, I think that it's really wonderful to develop new dynamics in a working group. And regardless if there's always an agreement or otherwise, I do agree with the mayor that there's a lot that we all have in common. And a lot that the mayor and I do have in common. And I think. I think it'll be a nice adventure and I think it'll be a nice effort for us to, to work forward, work together toward moving the city forward, you know. I, I'm so proud to say that West Sac has, you know, dreamed big and it's managed to achieve some pretty astronomical milestones over the last several decades. And, you know, I look forward to all of that we have ahead of us. And it's been a great fortune to serve. As a public official in this mighty little city. I just think that with this new council. Working with our mayor and most importantly, our staff. To help continue in our movies, moving our city forward. I do really look forward to that. So thank you very much to all of you for your vote of confidence.
All right. Thank you very much. And I'll, I think the clerk or somebody can change the titles under our name. I would think we would have.
I'd say leave it on, just, just to, just to mess with you guys for another.
I think what would have happened was that there would be an actual seat change. Trying to, trying to have that ceremony here by, by acknowledging that we need to have names changes here.
Move the boxes.
Move the boxes. You can, you probably can change your own names. I mean, not that you want to. I know I put my pronouns in mine because that's important to me. So you can rename yourself if you, if you would like.
Next is our consent agenda items three through fourteen. Are there any requests to move an item for questions or presentation by our administration?
Nope. I would like to remove an item, but I don't know if you were talking to me during that whole.
Oh, it's all of us. If you would like to remove an item for a question. Yes, which one?
Yeah, twelve.
Okay. Any others? Nope, all right. Item number twelve is consideration of updates to publicly available pay schedule for extra help employees and approval of job description. And is Ms. Caitlin Montez in to, yes, there she is. And she is our senior human resources analyst, pretty much it for human resources. Caitlin? Actually, Councilmember Early, please provide your question or whatever it is you'd like to know.
The question that I had was, I know that, and I'm not debating whether we should raise the minimum wage to fifteen dollars, by the way. I'm actually wanting to have and not necessarily here, but wanting to make sure we know for future conversations, whether that be for strategic planning. That we should consider going beyond the minimum and that fifteen dollars is not a livable wage. And I would love to see us consider raising to twenty dollars. I know that the impact of this would be large, particularly for, I think a lot of this is our rec center staff, which are unrepresented staff. But I think it's a real conversation we have, should have, not only simply as we should be competitive, even within our own city in which you have. Grocery stores paying twenty dollars an hour. But I also think that it is important that we reflect our values. And I know, Madam Mayor, you have, you have talked about this, the importance of having a prevailing wage. And so a livable wage, and we know that fifteen dollars is not. And so do not dispute that we should raise the minimum. I'm not saying that we shouldn't approve this. What I am saying is that when we go to our strategic planning, we should have a larger conversation about the values of our city.
Would you like a response from staff about this? There is a process on how this is established. I think they, they may be able to, I'll have our assistant city, I don't know who's going to go first.
I was just going to say, yeah, thank you for, for your comment, Councilmember Early. We certainly can. That can certainly be a discussion for, for a future meeting or at the retreat, as you mentioned. You know, we'll just move forward, we just request moving forward with this item at this time and then we can talk about that more.
Okay, thank you.
So just how do we go about, again, third meeting? How do we go about ensuring that it does, that potentially it makes it to the, this is what should be on our agenda?
Can, can the assistant city manager or, or Ms. Montez provide an update on, on how we do negotiations with. You know, with labor on these matters?
Unrepresented staff? Yeah, for unrepresented staff, generally that is. Proposals that are determined at, at the management level with, with the staff. And those are brought forward to the council for consideration. Usually we vet them in closed session first and then we'll bring them on a regular item for approval. So that is something that we can talk about in the context of, of those discussions.
And Amanda, if you want me to step in on the minimum wage aspect for extra help. And so generally, we, we find out what the minimum wage is going to be. We meet with the supervisors of the extra help positions. And we come up with a salary schedule that takes into consideration the compaction of the full-time positions that actually supervise these. So we have to be mindful not to obviously be the full-time staff with labor relations when we're doing those negotiations. And so we do a pretty detailed analysis, looking at the differences of those positions, because what that would do for our represented labor. You know, near those. So that's kind of how we came to the conclusion of this current salary schedule that we have, taking into consideration budget items as well as the compaction.
Thank you. So I, I did, I did want to say that there is a connection with working with represented. And then, and then unrepresented, you know, do come in as well. But if we take a look, if we don't. I'm, I'm looking at it like if we don't pay our represented equally, then, which I totally support, but I. That would be another discussion in closed session. Those are discussions that happen in closed session.
Yeah, and, and I think what, what I'm hearing from you is that. Our staff is that we have to take into account what our, our represented staff get paid. And, and I agree with that. And what I'm actually suggesting is potentially in addition to that, we should take a, a look at what our unrepresented staff. Make and that, that, that didn't be the bare minimum or, or the, or the floor, right? In order to make sure that we're not going over the, for our representative staff, if that makes sense. And so ensuring that, that both are making a livable wage. Because who's deciding about our unrepresented staff? We are. And so as just a, as a person who believes in, in prevailing wage, a livable wage. Of, you know, a, a work, a workforce that, that can actually support their family and pay their rent. That's, that's what I would say here. And so I understand this is a larger discussion. I didn't get the answer about how we ensure that we're actually having this discussion in the future, but. Right, well, and, and an item like this for the, if we wanted, if you wanted to discuss it at the council retreat, when we get going with that process. Our facilitator will reach out to all the council members and kind of gauge their interest and ideas of, of the things that they want to talk about at the retreat. So that would be the opportunity to bring that up and that would be one of the topics they consider. Well, thank you very much for letting me take, take some of this time.
Absolutely. Okay, I'll accept, there are no other, I think I'll accept a motion for.
I move.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Alcala moved, Mayor Pro Tem Roscoe seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. Next, we will move to item twenty. First on our, which is going to be brought up first as our city manager brought up, and it is our regular agenda item. And it is under finance and technology fiscal year 2021, 2022 mid-year budget workshop and consideration of resolutions twenty one dash. One hundred and twenty one dash one oh one, adopting a mid-year amendments to the operations and maintenance and capital improvement program budgets for fiscal year. Twenty twenty one, twenty two, and twenty twenty two, twenty three. And Ms. Roberta? Please do the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. If you could please enable screen sharing so I can share my presentation.
Does it work?
Not yet.
All right. How do I do that?
I'm here. This is Erin. That's probably something I, I know the city manager, Berlin, has that option as well. So if you go to screen share and there's a collection to allow multiple participants to share at one time. Do that.
Yeah, you did it. Great.
There it goes. Okay. All right, you should see my, my cover slide. Is that?
Yes, I could see it.
Oh, excellent. Okay. So we are going to start. I've got a brief presentation tonight. Oh goodness, I have two screens, so I have trouble, trouble managing both. First, I'll just start with a brief agenda. I know the council's seen many of the items that we're going to discuss today in previous meetings. But for our new council member and, and for the benefit of, of the rest of the group, we're going to provide a very brief background on our process, what we've done to date. We'll look at an update of the general fund. Unaudited numbers for fiscal year 2020, 2021. That's the fiscal year ended June thirtieth. And then we'll get into the mid-year budget proposals. I'll provide a summary of how the, the mid-year budget proposals impact the general fund. We'll briefly discuss the tax measures and then we've got our next steps and recommended action. So. First, for the background, the city adopts the two-year budget in odd numbered years. So we just adopt, the council just adopted our two-year budget in June of this year. In the second year of the budget, we typically come back and do a midterm. It's called a midterm review. Where we take information gathered over the previous fiscal year and we come to council with a workshop and. Proposed adoption of some midterm adjustments. In each year, we also do, we, we evaluate the budget throughout the year. And if there are adjustments that need to be made, we will come back with a mid-year adjustment. But typically we'd be in front of council around this time with an update of the previous fiscal year. And an update of the current year budget with the mid, mid-year adjustment. What you'll notice tonight, this mid-year adjustment is actually larger than what we would typically see. And the reason for that is during the budget adoption time earlier this year, with the pandemic impacts and, and other things going on. The council was hesitant to adopt all of the, the proposed budget amendments. And so the staff came back with a, a reprioritization of the request. The council at that time adopted a status quo budget and what we call the A-list items, the items that were prioritized that needed to be considered at that time. And the remaining items were moved to a B list, right? So we've got, we've brought back that B list, the items that were delayed from June. Also, a couple of weeks ago, the council and, and at the June budget adoption, the council directed staff to. Develop a general fund fiscal sustainability strategy and to come back to the council in the fall and present that. That report was presented to council and the council provided feedback on. Uh that report was presented to council, and the council provided feedback on the uh strategy and the options on November 17th. And so a handful of those items are also uh included in the mid-year or mid, mid-year adjustment. And so those we've titled fiscal sustainability. We've categorized them so the council can see what um, what requests come from which process. And then you can easily see what you've reviewed before versus what are brand-new requests. And so you'll see in red here that there are also new mid-year budget proposals. And those, it, it's a small, small group of proposals, but those are the items the council has not seen yet. Um and so all of those adjustments are detailed in, in your attachment, um including the items that you have seen in a previous um, in a previous meeting. So uh let's see, before we get into looking at those mid-year adjustments, uh I'll provide a brief update on where we ended the last fiscal year. So for fiscal year 2020, 2021, the general fund was budgeted, um assuming the use of about 4.9 million of fund balance to cover both one-time expenses of about 1.7 million and a projected 3.2 million dollar operating deficit. Um and, and that deficit was expected due to uh extremely conservative revenue projections, um given the, the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on our prior year general fund revenues. So in June, you'll see this part here actually provides comparison of the adopted budget, which I just described, the projections we provided in June, and then where we ended the year. So in June, when the budget was adopted, uh the projections at that time assumed revenues and expenditures would be about equal at about 60.4 million dollars each. Um the unaudited figures put revenues for this fiscal year at 64.9 million uh to cover total expenses of about 60.5 million. So that is an operating surplus of nearly four and a half million. Uh the net overall surplus after funding one-time expenses was 3.4 million, and the ending fund balance was 11.9 million. So overall, we saw revenues recover significantly last year, um most notably sales tax revenues. Um but that also aligned with the implementation of the Wayfair decision, which served to increase collection of sales tax revenues on out-of-state purchases. Um but overall, we're still much lower than the pre-pandemic revenues in several areas, including our uh transient occupancy tax, uh TOT or hotel tax, and our service charges. So we do expect that those will continue to recover, and, and we'll see some higher revenues in those areas next year, this year and next year. Um on the expense side, operating expenses ended the year three and a half million dollars under the adopted budget. Um and about forty thousand dollars, a little less than forty thousand dollars over our June projections. Um that's primarily due to 2.3 million dollars in labor savings. And you'll remember that we did hold some positions vacant over the last fiscal year, including a few of um department head positions for, for that purpose. Um there was also a million dollars in uh operations and maintenance savings and uh 200,000 dollars in unspent council contingency. Um so that's how we ended last year, actually, in a pretty, pretty good um situation, given, given everything that's going on. Um so this table might be a bit overwhelming, uh but it is a good summary level overview of the mid-year budget adjustments proposed tonight. Um the requests are broken down across the top to show you the ongoing impacts each fiscal year, uh the one-time requests, and then the requests uh for funding capital projects. And then on the left, they're broken down by those three categories that I mentioned in a previous slide. New requests, the fiscal sustainability requests, and the B-list items. Um negative numbers represent either a, a reduction in expenditures, savings, or an increased revenue, okay? Um while positive numbers signify impacts to the budget or increased appropriation. So you can see here that the new request, right here on the top line, um total, including the, the, the capital projects that we're looking to, to relieve some funding, total of almost a million dollars, a little over 800,000 dollars in savings um for the year. Uh, and about one million dollars in ongoing annual expenses, and this is across all funds. The fiscal sustainability proposals um are primarily shifting funding from one source to another at this time. Um the, the proposals here do not include all of the items that were discussed with council at the November 17th meeting. Um but it does include those types of items that impact the, the, the annual budget that we adjust right now. There are some additional items that, of course, will come in, in future uh council meetings. We'll be bringing back at midterm some of those items, including looking at um a proposal to pay off some of the uh public safety debt. Um and then other, other items, like new revenues, um just aren't quite right yet. Those are gonna take some more work. So um those will come in over time, but we have included the items that impact annual budget. Um and overall, you see it's about 411,000 dollars in savings on an annual basis. Um total of those requests are about 824,000. Again, most of these items shift funding between one source and another, or another. So this savings is actually made up of um eliminating the 200,000 dollar annual appropriation for general fund strategic priorities. It is typically never used. So what this does is free up ongoing revenue uh capacity. And if um one-time funds are needed, of course, those are available um and at the council's discretion. Um the other 211,000 is um an annual savings in the Measure K Fund for the rec center lease um obligation. And we're still in, in discussions with the, with the school district um about making that correction. However, those uh discussions are going well, and so you'll hear more about that at a future meeting. Um so the majority of the budget impacts proposed here, as you can see, are really the B-list item. Um so those are, are requests that the uh council has seen more than once um in workshops earlier this year in May and June. An ongoing annual request across all funds before we uh consider revenue impacts are just under a million dollars. And the total city-funded requests here are 11.5 million. Um, so, let's see, I've got a couple of charts on the next page um that just show visually what this looks like. So this, this just shows that um in a couple of different ways of slicing and dicing, at the largest portion of the adjustments here are on the B-list um or fiscal sustainability proposals, which the council's um reviewed in previous meetings. And there's a small chunk here, uh 1.6 million in new requests. Um and then by type, the, the majority of their requests are for CIP or other one-time items with a small chunk about 1.2 million annually in ongoing costs. All right, and then speaking about CIP, uh with, with the majority of our uh requests uh being for CIP, five capital projects make up uh most of those uh funding requests. And so I've listed them here so the council can see them. Um the largest of all of these, of course, is the Bright Park Improvement and ADA upgrades. What I've provided here is previous appropriations for these projects, the, the total mid-year requests, whether it's from city funds or grant funds, and then the total project budget. So the single biggest funding request in the mid-year budget is for the Bright Park Improvement and ADA Upgrades Project, with the total funding request of about 8.9 million, including 7.2 million in city funds. And if the proposed adjustments are approved, that'll result in a total project budget for uh phase one of those improvements of 9.3 million. All right, and I briefly mentioned revenues. Here is a table showing the proposed revenue adjustments um in the mid-year budget. About 7.8 million over the two fiscal years, um or about 4 billion annually. Each of the tax measure, uh sales tax measure funds, um it will see increased revenues of approximately 400,000 dollars annually. Um also, we did not budget for uh Bridge District IFD or EIFD revenues in the original budget. Um at the time, we were waiting for numbers from the county, uh providing the total revenues allocated to each of these districts. They're typically mixed with our Measure G revenues, and we separate them out um based on a report provided from the county. So now that we have our final revenues um and updated projections for these sources, uh we are proposing to adopt revenue budget um of 3 million dollars per year for the EIFD and about 500,000 per year for the uh Bridge District IFD. Again, these are revenues. Um there are a couple of, of project requests against the IFD revenues in this um budget. So we thought it important to add a revenue budget and update the, the council on um available funding. Um also, there is a, a proposed decrease in Measure G revenues of about 1.2 million per year to account for recent corrections to how the funds are allocated by county. So as I mentioned, in all, revenues are expected to be about 4 million higher in each of the two fiscal years. So that was a really high-level summary of the mid-year budget proposals. Um again, most of the requests proposed tonight have been workshop with council during previous meetings in May, June, and November. And the details for each budget request are included in your packet, along with links to the reports from prior workshop. Um so this presentation is really intended to kind of run along the surface, so we can devote our time tonight to questions and discussion and, and the workshop um and feedback from council. So um but the most important part of any budget proposal is, of course, the impact um to our available funding. So this slide shows uh the ongoing impact to the general fund operating budget of the proposed requests tonight. So you can see the B-list items, total about 50,000 a year in ongoing uh funds. The new mid-year requests um ultimately are about 175,000 per year. Um and the fis- fiscal sustainability proposals um serve to free up about 2.3 million a year in ongoing annual capacity, which is exactly what that strategy intended to do. Um council had, had identified several priorities, including, you know, competitive compensation, retaining employees, uh funding deferred maintenance um and replacement of equipment and vehicles and, and things of that nature, and, and being able to keep pace with the, with the growing population, the demand for new development um and desired city services. And so we've uh been able to do that tonight. I think the, the mid-year budget that we're proposing um uh meets, meets the council's um direction very well. Um so overall, after funding the mid-year budget request, the general fund is expected to have an ongoing annual surplus of 3.4 million. So um while I'm not getting into the details of individual budget proposals tonight, um I have had some budget briefings with the individual council members. And in some of those meetings, I picked up on some potential discomfort with um the proposal to use Measure N public safety revenues to fund three police departments civilian positions. Um the total cost is about 388,000 over the two years, um about 288,000 of it is ongoing. So while your packet is still proposing the use of Measure N funds, um I would recommend revising that to fund those positions with the general fund uh for now, and then staff will uh come back during midterm and bring back some proposed um options for clarifying um the appropriate use of the public safety measure and revenues in the, in the measure and policy. So uh in that case, if we were to make that change, which I would recommend doing, uh the general fund surplus would be just over 3.1 million per year. Uh, all right, on the one-time general fund, new mid-year one-time request total just under 150,000. Uh the majority of the general fund requests are one-time, including uh funding towards the Bright Park Project, um the Police Department Improvement Project, and the City Hall Reconfiguration, um as well as reserve of funds related to the uh River City Stadium debt obligations. Um the general fund is expected to end the, the two years with about 11.2 million in fund balance. That's inclusive of the surplus on the previous slide. And so if we uh move forward with the recommendation, I just made change funding sources for those positions, um it would end up with about 10.8 million dollars as of June 30th, 2023. Um it should also be noted that a handful of the projects proposed to be funded by general fund and the general facilities fund may be eligible for ARP, American Rescue Plan um funds, if the bill that's currently in the House is ultimately approved. And so um at, at that time, if that happens, staff would return to council with a funding proposal for ARP funds that might include um revising the funding source for, for some of these projects to free up from one-time general fund. Um Attachment seven in your report, I believe, provides the 10-year model for each of the four sales tax measures, um showing that even with uh the proposals before you tonight, um each of the measures has funding available for future ongoing and one-time needs, as well as for responding to opportunities and leveraging funding when the opportunity exists. Um, so with that, uh that concludes my prepared presentation. I would love to answer any questions that you have about the budget um request or any of the information presented tonight or in your packet. Um and this is a workshop, however, as I mentioned, since the council's seen many of these items, we've also prepared two uh resolutions, uh one to adopt the ONM budget and, and the other to adopt the midterm CIP budget, um if the council is ready to do so tonight. Um and I want to mention before I open it up or recommend it to the council, um the city manager had mentioned an errata memo. Um part of that was for this item tonight, so I've identified here uh the changes. Attachment five just included the incorrect cost for a homeless program position. Um in one year, it was, it was doubled, and it shouldn't have been. Um an attachment two, seven, and exhibit eight to the resolution incorrectly listed park improvement funds uh proposed for the Club West Outdoor Classroom Project. Um and, and the attachments have been revised to accurately, accurately proposed healthcare impact defunding. And so you should have those revised attachments in front of you. So with that, I would uh like to turn it over to the mayor to conduct the workshop.
Thank you, um Roberta, for doing a great job in the presentation. Um and uh and all the work you've put into um preparing tonight's um budget that, that you have before us. It's uh quite a few months that you've invested along with all the staff, um, you know, city manager and uh um appreciate the council mem- uh Councilmember Ledesma's um work behind this as well. We've um, you know, taken a look at uh the budget capacity and um and also appreciate members of the public, which um have taken some time to either write letters um back in June, expressing their concern, um bringing it to our attention. Um, you know, Sacramento Area Firefighters Association 522 on um raising the issues of, you know, making sure that we have um the resources, as uh Councilmember Early said, if we're gonna be paying our employees adequately or, you know, better, we need to have the resources to do that. I believe this budget, um you know, as you itemized some of the reasons why, and it clearly took to task making sure that we have a budget ahead of us to accomplish that. But then I wanted to open it up for questions um from council members or comments. Mayor Prozco?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um first off, let me, let me begin by thanking staff, and um, you know, we, we were here in May. Um and we were charged with taking this monster on. And while I would have liked to have approved of more of the projects back several months ago uh before we moved forward and created a B-list, I, I recognize that, uh you know, you've all been working very, very hard, even since well before May, to bring this well-prepared document to us. Um, I have a few comments on some of the items that uh I read. Um first off, I'm happy to see the 3 million dollar commitment to Bright Park Improvements out of our Measure N Community Improvements Fund. I think as, as a, one of the signatories to Measure N, and one of the two people along with former Mayor Protem Ledesma, uh who was on the Policy Formulating Committee, I, I think this is the purpose envisioned and intended when this portion of that fund was created, the community improvements, especially in the areas where we are kind of very difficult to get funding. Um so, you know, and as a mom whose child practices at Bright Park uh three to four times a week uh on one of West Sacramento's only competitive soccer teams, I'm, I'm really intimately familiar with the, the condition of the fields, and they're just unfortunately overdue for repairs. Uh frankly, the, you know, after years of healthy gopher, gopher and litter activity, um it's a bit pockmarked, and I want to ensure that, you know, the thousands of kids who utilize our largest park in West Sacramento remain safe and healthy and injury-free as they enjoy their, their recreation and exercise and, you know, competitive team sports. Um also, at the top of our priority list is obviously the ADA improvements that have a timeframe that we need to abide by. So we can make sure that our park is accessible to all the kids in our city. So I'm happy to see some of the effort that we've done to date. Uh I look forward to seeing more of the investments coming to fruition in the near future. Uh at that said, um, Sinem Head Sundown, okay, so Trace Michael, thank you so much. Um this has been a conversation over the last four years. I have had, been talking to uh Parks Director Tracy Michael, and before her, actually, former Parks Director Cindy Tuttle. Uh several years ago, in commemoration of the partnership with Disney, uh and after our Disney Kaboom creation, we hosted a very successful and widely attended um movie at Bright Park. It was Star Wars, and it was partially to promote the Disney, the new recreation, the new, I guess, site at Disney, uh but also uh to celebrate the, you know, the, the wonder that we've created with their Disney Kaboom Park. And so it had snacks, and lightsabers, and cool things, and the kids like loved it. And it was a wonderful way to connect with members of our community. And I think um right now, more than ever, it's what an opportunity to offer free entertainment and bring us together outdoors um at a time when we're most in need of connection with people in our community. And speaking of parks, I'm, I'm, you know, happy to see that we're making those investments in Patwin. Um, you know, the Patwin Playground Equipment Replacement Project, it's a beautiful park. Um many families and young children in that neighborhood. And it's right next to Summerfield, which is very widely attended with soccer and and baseball. But, you know, and if it really frankly, I mean, you all know that if it was up to me, every park in our city would be the envy of the region. But I'm least happy to see that we're making incremental investments to help provide kids and families a safe place to play and enjoy the outdoors. I'm also relieved to see in the general facilities, the deferred maintenance, basically, that, you know, that if we have needed to realize the investments in not only our city hall, but, you know, it's the West Sac Police Department. Now, they have been really long overdue there. And, you know, imagine that we can make those investments and configure the furniture and make sure that that police department gets a nice little facelift. Been very patient, they painted their own walls. It's time for us to go back and make sure our police department is, you know, proud, proud of where they were. Earlier, I said that, you know, I wish we would have funded certain things back when. And for me, the corp yard, I wish we could have moved forward forward on this investment when we last considered the budget. And I want to remind, or I want to always remind, you know, our council to consider the long-term vision and investments that we've already made for some of these very large-scale projects. You know, including the Riverfront, you know, our development there. I mean, as I mentioned in our last meeting, there's there's no shortage of of new and shiny short-term projects that we'd all love to fund, but we can't ignore what our city has been, where we've been and where we're going and where we've committed to going with, you know, to our residents. So project like the corp yard and obviously, you know, other big ticket items, I'd really like to see those come and move forward. And so I'm glad that I see that there. Almost done, the Discovery Preschool Summer Program also, man. The kid, you know, mom whose child went through the learning ladder. I've been barking up this tree for a long time, saying that we need STEM, we need, you know, summer programs that address some of the the interests of kids. We have wonderful programs that, you know, unfortunately, over the last few years, haven't been well-attended because of COVID. But from the time that I was on City School two-by-two for the last four years, this was one of the many programs that I had expressed support for and advocated for, and I'm happy to see it in our proposal with the, you know, with our city's elimination of our commitment to the learning ladder. I just want to fill any gaps we can, and I look forward to, you know, the this program and to consider whether or not it could be a model for, you know, other programs that we can replicate down the road, perhaps with either Measure E or private funding or partnerships somehow. And finally, I'm I'm very supportive of the investments in CLEA, CSOs. Absolutely need to make these investments in our public safety, including fire. But I wanted to comment on the small unmanned aircraft systems vehicle. And these are all, a lot of them are really small ticket items, but I think they could still be acknowledged. This year's cap to cap, I was happy to join a team of leaders from region's law enforcement community. I was delighted to advocate for policies that embrace moving more departments in the direction of utilizing these types of resources. It's really clearly a win-win, not only for the protection of our officers, you know, houses, houses could be cleared and situations diffused without the risk to our human resources and minimizing their exposure to risk, but also it's a win for the safety of our citizens who are charged with protecting. And we minimize and avoid dangerous human interactions and encounters with resources like this. So I I do want to say that as much as I'm I'm actually very appreciative of our decision last meeting to improve capacity in our general fund with the fiscal sustainability approach. I just want to be careful to, you know, I don't want us to be, okay, we're going to create capacity in one moment. And then the next thing you know, the money's committed away to something else, and we didn't realize the full intention of what it is that we set out to. So with that said, thank you so much, staff. I look forward to further, you know, conversations, whether that be Measure N policy, whether that be seeing what it is that's on our list once we come to our strategic planning retreat. But also great to see that we're attacking things like pavement and the real day-to-day issues that our residents want to see done. Thank you.
If there are no, the request is of council member Alcala.
I've had a few questions, Roberta. Does how much of a percentage of reserve does our city hold?
For the general fund, the council has an adopted policy to maintain a reserve of ten to twenty percent. It it has been pretty stable at around seventeen percent over the last few years. And that equates to a little over ten, ten million dollars. Obviously, I can't do a calculation in my head at the moment, but it's around ten million dollars.
And, you know, we have to talk bricks and mortar, obviously, this is a council. So how much of an increase? Well, I guess what I'm asking, I think we've all heard everyone complaining about potholes in our city. How much more funding do we have with that? And that would be under what now? That would be under general facilities fund, correct?
Funding for road maintenance, filling potholes is typically under the road fund. It's funded by gas tax or general fund or one of the tax measures that has road rehabilitation funding. So Measure K, Measure E. And there is not a lot, I'll pull up the, we've actually had to make some some revisions over the last couple of years as it relates to what's funded under the road fund to free up some capacity. It was running in a deficit, and so as a result, we moved the street light, traffic signal and street light function to the general fund. So but I'm pulling up the the attachment that has the fund balances, so I can tell you what's in there. In your packet, I think, is attachment eight.
Roberta, if I could chime in on that too, while you're while you're looking at that, I just want to make the point that, you know, there there is the funding that Roberta is mentioning for what goes into the the work of filling potholes, which is obviously a very important maintenance function. It's part of the reason for why we aim to create more capacity in the general fund. You know, that's that's a priority for the council to allocate more resources. But I will say that the budget that you adopted in June, in combination with this budget, with the B-list items, I don't have the number at the top of my head, but I do recall it's it's, I describe it as an unprecedented amount in terms of the amount of money that the council has allocated to major road projects, not beyond filling potholes, but, you know, designing the engineering and the actual improvements for some of the major roadways that we know need need the work. I wish I had the details at my fingertips, but but it's definitely, there's there's a lot more money in this current two-year budget than in past budgets for roads.
Yeah, I I just mentioned that because I see so many new projects, you know, new homes, new condos that are going to be built, you know, in the future. So it's just something I'm I'm wondering about trying to trying to focus in on, you know, what lies ahead. And Councilwoman Early brought a very good point. So I was just wondering when we will, I think she was asking, and I also didn't feel I had quite understood. We're we're talking about compensation. When is this conversation taking place? I mean, this is normally something within negotiations. When is it in May that we're going to be approaching this in in the budget?
Yeah, I can try to take that one. So the negotiation depends on which which group. So we have represented groups that run on contracts, their MOUs all expire various times. I know that I believe all of the MOUs, I'm not mistaken, Amanda will correct me, do have a term that comes up during the two-year, the current two-year budget. The discussion earlier was more focused around the unrepresented groups, which we do have quite a few employees that fit in those categories. We are planning to address some proposals for those groups. And we also, we do those sort of in the same process, in the same context. We we develop a proposal at the staff level. We bring it to council typically starting with a with a closed session item. But eventually, those make their way to the to the regular agenda and have to get approved by council. So so we, any increases to unrepresented will eventually be budget considerations during, between probably now and and maybe the midterm budget, but definitely in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two calendar year, we'll be addressing that.
Okay, and I just want to mention one more thing. I know the pool's been a big issue in in the north, the pool for the children out there. And I know we do have Measure N monies also. It's not part of the immediate phases that we were going to undertake. But I think, you know, quite a few folks have come forward talking about how critical they think a pool is out there, especially during the summers, talking about our low-income areas, you know, where many homes don't even have the air conditioning. And it's sort of the only rest that some of these kids have in terms of recreation. So before I say something, I know we go with recommendations, we make the decisions, we go with recommendations staff makes. On something like this in the budget, do we? How are we going to get community feedback or input on something like that? I know this is more of a budget talk, but I'm also curious of.
Right, right, yeah. If I could, yeah, just sort of break that down. So you have a couple of things going there. So one, tonight, as Roberta highlighted in the slide, it showed some of the major CIP projects. Talk about unprecedented, the the amount of money in the budget proposed anyway for Bright Park takes us beyond the the current phase of the ADA improvements and would allow us to implement more of the master plan beyond beyond the ADA improvements. Now, I I think the council will recall, not all of you were on the council at the time the the Bright Park Master Plan was first adopted, but there is a master plan that lays out a phasing strategy, a budget strategy. And and that's sort of the operative document right now, the one that we're working with. But we have heard, you know, the council's desire to look at other options in terms of either looking at the phasing differently or looking at doing more with Bright Park than we were planning to do in this current two-year budget. So that's definitely an item that staff is is not just aware of, but I I have the Parks Director Tracy Michael, and I've had several discussions. And she's she's working on a policy, you know, paper to give you guys some options that when that will happen, you know, it'll likely be something we take up as part of your strategic planning. But also there'll be subsequent actions that will take place with with programming that money for Bright Park. So so the short answer is if there's a desire to move up the pool or change the phasing, that'd be something that we would need to hear from the council. You'll have the opportunity to look at that, I would say, in early twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you.
I think Ledesma was, had a comments and whatnot before me.
Right ahead.
Councilmember Early, why don't you go ahead?
You are so kind. Is that that statesmanship statesmanship they were talking about earlier? Um, I think just real quick, I I appreciate Councilmember Alcala and Madam Mayor, you you acknowledging, again, me trying to fumble around, talking about our employee compensation. And I think it will also be important as we move forward and consider the pool, I I would hope that in the report that we get from Tracy, it also takes into account the rate increases that we would need to do in order to compensate staff, right? Laborers that are working at our our community center in in Southport right now, right? And so I I think all of that is going to be important as we talk about how do we invest and and potentially commit to a pool as well, right? And and bright and broadrig, as we're talking about subsidizing right now rates and whether our city is willing to pay increased rate, right? Because we can only subsidize so much in order to pay our employees livable wages, right? And also begin to sort of be begin to have like net costs versus us continuing to be in the hole around our pool in Southport. I think I said all that.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Thank you. First, thanks, Roberta and team. And and Aaron, the city manager. So this is a conversation that I, you know, all due respect to our friends at FIRE who raised an issue around kind of where we want to go with budget, that we were well on that path. And we were concerned about this budget last year, about where revenues were going. And at our strategic planning session, had a very candid discussion about concern over revenues and what the impacts were. And I I but I think in the end, we're all right, right? We're all, we're sitting here today on, what is today, December, I don't even know what day it is, summary, two twenty-one, after two year, almost two full years of a pandemic. And not knowing businesses, we've seen businesses go, contribute to sales tax. We've seen people that change in in working habits and office buildings that aren't being occupied right now. And and this is unlike anything any generation has ever faced across the country, across the world for that matter. And here we are nearly two years, four years in, and we're talking about a budget with surpluses. We're talking about a budget that we're able to fund a lot of really, really good projects. I appreciate Councilmember Alcala bringing up the the road impacts, the fact that we're able to continue to fund roads. And I think says that 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 when when most cities and that are in our predicament don't have a, they're totally one-hundred percent reliant on the road fund, we have built-in mechanisms and revenues and assign it towards road projects. We're still able to do these things, we're still able to fund home run, we're still able to fund even looking at expansions, seven, over seven million dollars to go towards our the city's park, which is Bright Park, and how we can improve it. It's an extraordinary moment and and one that has been years and I did a couple of decades in the making and by prior councils who were trying to be prudent and trying to look ahead and try to learn the lessons of the Great Recession and trying to see how we could build a culture where we are prudent with our dollars, but make investments in our people. And and we've done that, and we and we're still doing that. And so to Roberta and team, we started this our this discussion at the end of the last year, beginning of this year, and then most certainly in the mid-year budget discussions, we were concerned, and rightly so, and this is showing that we had a right to be concerned. But we are also, we should we should have faith in the decisions we made. And it's allowing us to really kind of reconfigure the budget a little bit so that the Councilmember Early's discussion point around, do we have capacity to grow? Do we have capacity to continue to invest in the people who make the city go? We do. And I think those are the right discussions we should have for every one of the team that works in the parks and public works and our great water water supply company and our public safety sector and to the folks that run the finance, everybody, right? They depend on us to to provide for the families and and provide for our citizens, a government they can be proud of. And we we should, and we have it. And I one hundred percent believe that the budget budgets represent the city's values. We have a lot to show. And this is another step towards that because we're we're we, you and me, and again, I'm not going anywhere. I feel like I'm talking that way sometimes. But for the next ten years, this council and some of you that are just new to it, three meetings in, and some that are just a year in, and those, the new mayor and everybody else that that will get to make decisions with that money to ensure the next generation of West Sacramentoans have the same opportunity. So with the capacity, I'm just going to put a little warning out here that we have capacity. These moves will allow us, will allow us to make, continue to make strong investments and prudent investment. But it also comes with the need to be prudent, which means occasionally we'll have to say no to something. And occasionally we'll have to say, well, that project isn't right, the right one, or we'll have to do, take another look or another approach to that. It's not a harsh thing, it's not, it's just a way we do business. Our staff is is brilliant at it and creative as they're being today. But it is, this this, we we are setting a really strong foundation for the next decade as we have ten-year projections of each one of the funds of where we can go and continue to make prudent investments. This isn't up to amount, doesn't mean we get to spend it all. And I just want to flag that 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 graph that Roberta showed, which is we're adding about just about a million dollars in new spending on ongoing budgets. And that's that's about a five percent increase year over year, which is fine. I'm comfortable, wholly comfortable with that amount. And and I think that's just something that we are allowed to do. There are other cities that don't, are are going the opposite direction and aren't making these same choices. So again, I my my comments today are geared towards this council about understanding of where we are in this process. And it's it's come as the result of a year of of work. And the department heads, I want to thank them because those, every one of those. Um, and the, the department heads, I want to thank them because those, every one of those. Uh, those papers that came in regarding each one of these budget items is perfectly thought out. It's, it's, uh, you can, um, the first line of defense about is this the right kind of spending? Do we need it? Comes from Roberta and Aaron and the department heads. As they get requests from their team about what they need to do and they, and. They, each one of those was thought through, um, scrutinized, you could tell. And made it to this B-list so we can continue on. The new spending as proposed, I, I, I agree with, I can. I appreciate, uh, the, the consideration about the, 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 the three, uh, positions. That are moving back to the general fund. I think that's, that's prudent. So we can get our arms around measuring a little more and. Um, I think that's the right thing to do. Um, I'd also say that there are continued investment in, um, as I mentioned, Brett Park and the capital improvement project. Are the right ones. We need to continue to invest in our city and our city's ability to provide the services it needs. So you saw in there, the police, uh, uh, facility, you saw in there, um, uh, trail network. You saw in there are other things that are really important for us as a city to kind of keep moving. So all in all, I'm, I'm, I'm just really, really, uh, proud of, of the work that's been done here and that we are. Part of it, that everybody here got, got to say, I totally one hundred percent respect of dynamics coming into this. Council about thinking about our people and, and about how we can, um, uh, look to, um. From the, those that are making hourly wage, the rec. Senator in summer, can we help them out? Uh, I'd love to, I, I'd love to look at that. The first step of that, this, the first step in that journey is do we have it? And this is saying that we, we could have. And again, my only caution is, is it, you know, it, it, it's, it's. We have to be measured and thoughtful in every expenditure going forward and, and we are. A couple of other, um, things, a comment around this, uh, if I can find the page, I made my notes, I apologize. Put it down on iPad, um. Uh. Yeah, I, oh, I, I, I made this point, uh, in private to you, Roberta and to Aaron about. Um, some of the road rehab projects and, and. Um, I, I hear our constituents and, and our neighbors, um. And their concerns around, uh, the roads and potholes. And at some point in my, in the last five, six years, we did a kind of the pavement, um. The pavement study, someone's going to chime in, probably Aaron, the, the pavement study we did. We showed kind of the road, the, the grades of the roads and kind of what it means and, and how much of the full. You know, to get everybody to a certain level standard, you know, what that might be and it's, it's an, it's an, it's an atrocious amount of dollars. They have to go in to get every piece of, of roads, uh, paid to, um, pristine levels. Um, and then, and then the, the bad part is, is in ten years, they'll be back into that shape after you do them. And, and it's, so you, we have to be strategic, which I think we're doing. And, but one of the things that I want to make sure we are doing is transparent about, well, you know, we did measure E. That was one of the components I just demanded that part of measure E when we wrote that. Five years ago now, uh, but that it, we have dedicated source for road repair. And I'm glad to see that we're continuing that. Um, if we didn't have that and we would still have some SB one money, obviously for the major road projects. But we, the road fund, which is funded by a bunch of taxes that are depleting. Um, and which is why I don't have it, we'd be, we'd be doing a lot less. And I know that's not good, some people, for some people, um, and I understand that, but it is, I, I, I'm. Pretty happy that we're continuing to do that. The one issue is I, I, we, we have some on measure, on one of the, um, capital projects we're going to bring up, which is, uh. The Industrial Boulevard Harbor Boulevard Pavement Rehabilitation. It was my early lesson of twenty sixteen, fifteen about, you know. It takes time to get these projects in, in place and those are, I, I, I kind of. Thought, you know, we're putting, um, I want to say, uh, a million dollars towards that project, I think to, um. Uh, two allocations, I think that's right, you have nine, um, dollar allocations for that. Which I, I agree on, but it's, it's kind of the pre-funding, the early investment into getting those projects shovel ready. So while we're spending that amount of money on a road project. You won't see the road actually being done, it's actually the design that has to be done to meet all the standards and do all, make all the. That, all, all the hurdles, government work. So it's just one of those things that as we think about going forward, how to make those kind of things transparent is. We should have a kind of where money is going to the, for, for that early design, implement, uh, early design, early investment. Into certain word projects and then also the ones that we're, 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 how much money you actually put in towards. Improvements like the West Capital or the State Streets Project or the, or the, even the pothole filling which goes on, ongoing, right? So people should be able to see that and understand it. And we're not going to make everybody happy by the amounts of money that get put towards it. But we're putting money towards it and we need to continue to show that. So that was a comment I had. Um, there's another comment I had around, let me just a second, I'm sorry, Mayor. Um. All right, I did want to, uh, just, just highlight again, you, the, the job you done and, uh, on articulating the, 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 the new. Um, positions and the new spending. I appreciate you, uh, kind of throwing that slide up there, uh, just. And showing how the adjustments that we agreed to at the last meeting are impacting that, the, the, the table you provided. Uh, it's a net gain for the general fund, which is super important. And if I didn't say that before, I'll say it again. Uh, I do want to talk about measure G too, uh, that was the other one. Uh, cause we're, I think that, that the ask there is around for a long-term planner. To be part and in deck against the measure G funds. A measure G was passed as an advisory measure, measure, uh, which I authored. Seven years ago. Each, um, so, um, uh, but it was meant so that. Voters agreed, I want to say it was eighty-seven percent of the voters agreed. Keep that money in community investment for infrastructure, for parks, for the things that make the community. You know, better in terms of that basic function. That's what the measure G and the subsequent E I F D I F D funds for. And so if we're going to deck somebody against those funds. I want to make sure that this council and future councils have an accounting of the work they're doing that are towards that end. Right? So measure E, we're, we, we've been most. Um, refined in this effort in terms of ensuring and measure K and J. We're also about, we, we report out what we spend towards that and the voter said this. And I don't want to lose track because decking that person, and this is why the measure N when raised a flag. For myself and another council member, Roscoe, is that if we're going to duck people against it. I, I, I am getting a little more comfortable with that because especially measure E was meant to be seed money. Um, but we want those dollars to be impactful. Um, and dollars to be there for opportunity, right? That was, that was more measure E, we're going to define better measure N, I think that you're asking. And measure G to me is the same thing, has to be, has to, has to have that accounting. Whereas if, I, I understand after years and years later. That we don't, redevelopment brought us the ability to go. Have somebody get revenues to pay for people to do the long-range planning for things. We're tearing down the, the oil tank on the riverfront Pioneer Bluff. There's no applicant coming in to do the planning work. And pay the fees that offset the cost of a planner doing that work for Pioneer Bluff. So where does that money come from? This, right? There's no one, there's no developer ready to build houses on it. It's years away from that. We need somebody work. That's the concept. And I agree, measure G can help pay for that planner. To make sure it continues to make progress or Pioneer Bluff will become the office residential. Riverfront pos, pos, project that, uh, and, and, and beautiful part of our, uh, city that we're looking for. And I understand the need for that. I think voters pretty simply can, can relate to that. You need to get that work started. There's no revenue stream coming from a developer until ten to twenty years from now, whatever it's going to be. So we need to invest in that now and to me, that's, I'm okay with that. But I do think this board, uh, this council. Should have an accounting of the work, their, their work plan so that it is accountable to measure G project. Does that make sense, Roberta and Aaron? Probably shaking his head right now at me.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, um, those are kind of two general comments I had. I am sorry for taking so long, Madam Mayor, but this is, you know, I, again, if there's, uh, one thing that, that we've done and I think. Um, we can all agree that, that, you know. Talking about our budget state we are in is a real credit to the real professional staff and leadership Roberta has brought. Um, so I know some of you got right along, right along with our police. Or so the fire department or photo parks. Um, I've sat with Roberta looking at spreadsheets, so that's kind of my nerdy play. Um, um, it's an important part of our city and it helps everything else go. And I just really appreciate the work on it and, um, I'll stop there. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Ledesma. Um, I'm going to reserve my comments, um, for after public comment, allow the members of the public to speak. Um, so I will open it up for public comment at this time. Madam clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
Um, Madam Mayor, we do. First one is Maria Garcia. I'm going to go ahead and allow her to speak now instead of the timer. Thank you. Maria.
Ah, sí. Me escucha?
Sí.
Ah, bueno, primero que nada voy a hablar en español. Está bien?
Está bien. Quieres que alguien le, um, ah, resumida la, lo que estás diciendo?
Um, como gusta no está bien, ah, pero me gustaría hablar. Todas las frases completas y no cortar tanto tiempo.
Okay, está bien, María.
Okay, ah, la razón de la que esto, por la razón que quiero hablar en este momento. Es por la situación que está atravesando, no, lo que es West Sacramento, al, en nuestra comunidad de West Sacramento. Y me preocupa mucho la situación que estamos pasando. Primero que nada, quiero decirles, mi nombre es María García. Soy una, um, residente de West Sacramento. Um, vivo en el área de Broderick, Albright. Um, he estado mirado, tengo cinco hijos aquí en West Sacramento. Tengo doce in River City, doce in Riverbank y una en el colegio. La razón que quiero hablar es porque he estado mirando por muchos años tantos problemas en esta área. Y la razón de que queremos que nos pusimos ganas, um, diferentes actividades aquí para hacer para nuestros niños. Um, el día de hoy tuvimos un. Um. Bueno, tenemos varios meses que han estado varios niños, um, teniendo problemas dentro de las escuelas. Um, ha habido cigarrillos electrónicos, hemos estado lidiando con muchas cosas diferentes en esta área de Broderick. Um. Hoy en este día hubo una pelea. Ah, que me hizo. Sentirme, todos mis sentimientos encontrados por la razón de que. A los niños que habían de llegar de Afganistán, a niños recién llegados, no hablan todavía suficiente inglés. Y los están empezando a golpear. No se me hace justo que todo esto esté pasando dentro de nuestras escuelas. He estado hablando con diferentes personas. De diferentes partes. Y lo único que he escuchado durante todo este tiempo es que hablan y hablan de dinero. Pero no hay una solución inmediata que pueden hacer para ayudarnos con nuestros hijos. Necesitamos ayuda. Lo más pronto posible. Es todo.
Gracias, María, por apoyar a su gente in, um, in Bright Park. Does everybody understand what she said?
Actually, a large, a large portion of that, but I think it would be good to translate.
Okay, so she has been asking for, um, support in programming for youth that she is observing. Um, you know, doing, um, you know, activities that as a result of not having enough programming out there. Um, you know, smoking electronic cigarettes or fighting. Um, one, one observation she made was, um, I think it's Riverbank, um, school is after school that they. Are, um, a group of kids who come out and target, uh, you know, either. Children of color, but mainly today was an Afghan youth. Um, that there was a big fight. And so she's observing these fights on a frequent basis. She, and, and she believes that there was just not enough services, um, and support for youth. Um, in, in her area, that she's a resident of West Sacramento. Um, I know Maria lives, um, in the Bright Broderick area and that's where her children, she has five children. Two go to high school and three are in, um. Uh, in the K three A program, the public school system. So they, their, her concerns are pretty significant about, um, the public safety of the kids. And, uh, so I just checked in with, um, with, uh, Rob to follow up with her about, uh, the incident she reported.
And it, and it sounded like she had also talked to the schools about this as well?
Been talking to the schools, yes.
Yeah. Is this something we could also follow up with in our two-by-twos?
Yes, we can follow it up on the two-by-twos. I'll put it on, I don't want to wait until a two-by-two, those are every other month, so.
Yeah, but long-term solution, right?
Yeah, I think, um, I think what I can do is reach out to the school board members, um, and connect with them about this. But, uh, it's more, I think, a public safety issue at this point. Uh, Chief Strange, did you want to add anything?
I was just, uh, going to ask the, uh, clerk if she could make sure she gets Ms. Garcia's contact information. And I'll happily have somebody follow it.
Thank you.
Mayor, really quickly, uh, I, I spoke with Ms. Garcia also. I did refer this to the superintendent, to Cheryl Hild, doctor, I'm sorry, Dr. Hildreth. And they are aware as well as, um, um, school board member Jackie Wong. So.
Thank you. Okay, um, Madam Clerk, do we have another, um, public comment request?
We do, we have two additional requests. Next one is, um, Ms. Bahava.
Hello again, thank you for this opportunity to, um, speak again. Um. Abdul from the, uh, mosque has also been appraised of, uh, this, uh, young girl. Uh, her, um, abjeed and her hair was pulled. Uh, and Lucia, I don't know her last name, a parent, uh, yelled at the girls that were hitting her. And, uh, uh, ran across the street and comforted the girl that was getting hit. And, and then was with her while the parents happened to have pulled up and, um. And, and, you know, took over and so, so, uh, so that's, uh, uh, basically what happened. But what I wanted to, uh, uh, follow up with is. At, at the last, uh, budget meeting or at the last meeting. I wanted to add the comment that, uh, you know, another variable that we have here is, uh. Uh, a time and, and, uh, sometimes I see that. Uh, we have some grandstanding, uh, and, and I'm, I'm all for information. Uh, and I'm all for data, that's, uh, so critical. But, uh, sometimes when we grandstand and, uh, on our end. Uh, just so that you know, uh, from our end, all we hear it's, uh, me, 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 me. And so without naming a particular, uh, council member out of respect and diplomacy, I'll use that word today. Uh, uh, that's where a lot of our time goes when, when, uh, uh, our, our, our one. Council member spent time, uh, in, in some melodrama, uh, 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 grandstanding. And so being concise, uh, with information is helpful, uh, just so that you know. Um, the other thing, if you attend the, uh, the. School board meetings, they tell you in advance when, before you give public comment. That if you say anything that's derogatory or inflammatory, you will be held liable. You need to be the same. When you said that the other council member was not prepared, uh, excuse me, unless you're a budget expert.
Thirty seconds?
Thank you. Oh, um. You're on notice that if a statement or something similar like that again, uh, I don't think that's proper. And that's actually a violation of something. So I am so grateful for this opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, um, request to speak?
We have Rhonda Pope-Floris.
Go ahead, Rhonda. Rhonda?
Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay, sorry about that and I got to start all over. Um, first off, I, I just want to commend, um, all of those individuals that have been working on. The efforts, um, for the Bright Park. I am extremely happy to see, uh, movement happening for actually making Bright Park a priority. Um, I also wanted to, um, acknowledge Maria Garcia and, um, echo the concerns that she's relaying. I had discussions with her as well regarding the issues that she was talking about. Um, and also in a different capacity, I also want to recognize Maria. Um, she is one of our signature gatherers for. Ahm, y también en una capacidad diferente, también quiero reconocer a María, ahm, ella es una de nuestras recopiladoras de signos para el Pool Bright. Y ella ha estado constantemente recopilando signos. Sólo continuaré a agregar, ahm, los signos al registro. Y solo quiero también señalar, ya sabes, la falta de recursos que están en el lado Bright y Broderick. Ahm, solo para enfatizar, esto es, esto es por lo que necesitamos hacer que el Bright Park sea una prioridad. Hagamos que se implementen algunos programas, hagamos que el parque se haga, hagamos que haya cosas para que estos niños hagan. Hagamos que haya un pool con programas para que esta negatividad y la energía que está siendo extendida en, en malas maneras ahm, pueda ponerse hacia las cosas buenas. Y cuando la comunidad ve que estás invirtiendo en ellos y los niños ven eso, eso va a hacer una gran diferencia en sus vidas y van a ver esto como si estuvieran cuidados y que, y que son importantes. Así que solo agradezco a todos los que han hecho los esfuerzos hasta hoy para hacer que el Bright Park sea una prioridad. Y, ahm, también eco los comentarios de María Grahava, ella también es otra que está en esa campaña también. Así que gracias a todos, estoy tan moved. También quiero agradecer a la persona que comenzó y, y realmente llevó esto, ahm, Cheryl Castrina. Ah, ella fue alguien que trabajó en el Bright Park muchos, muchos años atrás, quien en realidad es la que me trajo a la mesa para, ahm, para llevar esto a cabo. Así que siento que estoy tomando su torre y solo llevándola a cabo, así que gracias mucho.
¿Hay otros peticiones de hablar, madame?
No, pero sí tenemos una solicitud escrita, y está en el sitio web y la envié a ti.
Gracias por recordarnos, lo aprecio. Bien, cerraré el comentario público y traerlo de vuelta a los miembros del consejo. Mayor Patem Rosco, ¿te pidió que...? Ah, eres, eres, eres inmudada.
No, no quería ser inmudada, gracias.
Okey. ¿Otros comentarios de los miembros del consejo? Okey, y, y, Rhonda, tu mano todavía está ahí. Muchas gracias. Y solo, ahm, yo, yo, yo quiero decir unas cuantas cosas aquí. Primero, ahm, solo realmente aprecio que tengamos un presupuesto que se presenta a nosotros, que es muy transparente, incluyendo, ahm, los peticiones adicionales de item presupuestal que has proporcionado. Ahm, antes de entrar en mis comentarios, quería preguntar un par de preguntas sobre los posiciones de oficia de servicio de la comunidad. Ahm, y creo que Che Guevara está en la lista, creo, creo Che Guevara, ¿serías la única, o, o, Roberta, ¿serías la única que contestara las preguntas?
Depende de la sesión más probable, o la pregunta es más probable Che Guevara.
Okey, gracias. Ahm, Che Guevara, ¿son estas nuevas posiciones y si sí, ¿por qué las tienen?
Ah, son nuevas posiciones y, ahm, son parte de, es, es interesante algunos de los comentarios que han salido hoy, porque creo que, ya sea que estemos hablando de salarios o, ahm, las posiciones que agregamos o dando un poco de mi presentación más tarde, ahm, tener real evaluaciones realizadas que nos llevan a cambios estratégicos, pensadores y inclusivamente informados que todavía son valoros. Ah, esto es parte de lo que es. Así que son nuevas posiciones, pero es parte de lo que estamos tratando de hacer para asegurar que en realidad colocamos las correctas clasificaciones de trabajo en place. Y en este caso, preservar en esos costos de oportunidad donde los oficiales, oficiales aprobados están allí haciendo trabajo en, en la comunidad que probablemente sea gestionado por una clasificación de trabajo diferente.
Sí, Che Guevara. Y para que la posición de oficia de servicio de la comunidad se llene, ¿hay una variante de, ahm, el cheque de fondo bajo el Departamento de Policía versus, ahm, ya sabes, tenerlo administrativamente hecho? En posiciones en general, no, no, no tenemos que refiere solo a esto.
Creo que si entiendo bien, ¿estás preguntando sobre los investigaciones de fondo, investigaciones de preempleo realizadas y qué cosas califican o descalifican a los empleados?
Sí, en otras palabras, digamos, por ejemplo, como la posición de oficio de servicio de la comunidad va a estar ayudando en, ahm, roles de apoyo dentro del Departamento de Policía para que, que, ya sabes, ahm, ya sabes, estoy mirando para asegurar que el cheque de fondo está, está en cumplimiento con eso. Pero otras posiciones como un coordinador de outreach sin hogar o cualquier cosa relacionada con la ausencia de hogar. Y, y no es específicamente relacionado con la seguridad pública, pero si fuese, si fuese a tomar una mirada, por ejemplo, ahm, un cheque de fondo para esa posición, ¿qué es, y si yo, si estaba bajo la administración de la ciudad versus el Departamento de Policía, ¿hay una variante?
Sí, creo que, ahm, la HR sería probablemente la mejor perspectiva más global sobre eso, pero te diría que sí, creo que habría una diferencia. Ahm, principalmente porque casi todas las clasificaciones de trabajo dentro del Departamento de Policía tienen exposición a información muy sensible, cosas que son confidenciales, información de identificación personal de la gente, circunstancias que la gente, ahm, encontró que se convirtió en víctimas o acusadas. Y así, ah, porque estamos limitados por la necesidad de saber y derecho de saber con esa información, el nivel y, y estándar para los backgrounds, ah, las investigaciones, la información que se contiene en ellos y las cosas que necesitamos considerar ah, cuando hacemos decisiones de preempleo y decisiones de empleo, ah, realmente para todos los personal aquí, ah, tienen un grado diferente de escrutinio que yo diría que la mayoría de los miembros de la policía no en la policía tendrían.
Gracias. Y, por ejemplo, nuestra división de outreach, ahm, ah, donde hemos establecido, ahm, algunas nuevas posiciones. Ahm, y, y en mi, en mi experiencia como trabajadora social, ahm, ya sabes, he, he llegado a eso donde cuando estamos tratando de, ahm, conseguir que un trabajador social sea capaz de calificar para obtener una licencia, pasan por un cheque de fondo, algunos califican, algunos no, algunos tienen como una, una historia de uso de sustancia severa y, y no son calificados. Pero estamos, estamos mirando para modificarlos porque, ya sabes, están, están en recuperación y están haciendo un gran trabajo y probablemente, ahm, a veces mejor adaptados para ayudar a otros, ahm, para, para servir. Y así hay, ahm, solo algunas personas en la profesión, ahm, que están haciendo su parte, obteniendo una educación, ahm, buscando licencias y también, ahm, necesitando, ya sabes, también probablemente mejor equipados para servir, que, ya sabes, algunas situaciones donde, ahm, nuestras poblaciones más vulnerables están expuestas en, en tipo, ahm, proporcionar ese equilibrio y apoyo en, en la comunidad. Y, ahm, y, ¿hay un obstáculo para personas con ese tipo de historia para poder calificar para una posición en el Departamento de Policía?
Creo que en algunas circunstancias definitivamente habría obstáculos dependiendo del, la, la importancia de la, la historia y, y las cosas específicas, criminales o, ah, no criminales pero relacionados con el comportamiento. Ah, la realidad es, y creo que raised una cuestión realmente importante y parte de nuestra evolución en nuestra examinación de esas personas que contratamos es realmente considerar la clasificación de trabajo, el trabajo del rol. Y tú traes la división de servicios de la comunidad y, y la realidad es, es que hay valor para la experiencia vivida para estos roles que realmente están ayudando a nuestros, a nuestros miembros de la comunidad que están, que están lidiando con los desórdenes de uso de sustancia, con la salud mental, ah, ah, preocupaciones o preocupaciones de enfermedad. Y así hay algún valor en eso que nosotros, que nosotros consideramos. Pero también tenemos que considerar la importancia de la historia, cuánto tiempo ha pasado desde, ahm, esos, ahm, problemas, por falta de otro término, ahm, se han resuelto y cuánto tiempo de tiempo se ha conservado, por ejemplo, el uso de drogas, cuánto tiempo limpio han tenido y qué han estado haciendo con ese tiempo. Así que hay, hay mucho que se considera y, ahm, el estándar para los oficiales de policía, eh, para nosotros, probablemente sea el más alto estándar. Y luego el, el nivel de tolerancia para ciertas cosas, ah, para otras clasificaciones de trabajo cambiarán. Ahm, pero estas están definitivamente tomando en cuenta a, a nivel individual mientras vemos candidatos pasar por ahí y tener que hacer eso, pesar de, ahm, tipo el, el riesgo versus, ahm, ya sabes, cómo vamos adelante, especialmente donde, ya sabes, nuestra, nuestra profesión como un todo está bajo una escrutinía inminente. De hecho, así. Ah, pero necesitamos asegurarnos de que podemos responder, ah, las preguntas sobre cómo screenamos y cómo contratamos de una manera que, que sea justa y equitativa, pero también asegura que estamos protegiendo al público de aquellos que empleamos.
Suena bien, gracias. Así que con eso, ya sabes, ahm, ya sabes, afortunadamente tienes una fuerza y, y establecida, ahm, ya sabes, ah, departamento y, ahm, tu calidad de, de trabajo y contratación, ahm, la más elegida, ahm, y los que están, ya sabes, van a hacer el mejor trabajo sirviendo a la comunidad, es, ha sido, ahm, ya sabes, hemos sido afortunados de poder llegar a ese punto. Así que solo quiero agradecer el trabajo que has hecho para lograr eso y, y, y tu personal que, ahm, puso el trabajo para hacer el outreach, ahm, y la reclutación para ese trabajo. Pero mirando en el, mirando hacia el futuro para ver si hay modificaciones que podemos lograr. Ahm, y, ah, y veo que estas posiciones de oficia de servicio de la comunidad como, como cumplir un criterio bajo, ahm, creo que está bajo la medida N, que se está considerando para, bueno, se está modificando, así que tenemos un fondo general menor. Ahm, pero la medida N creo que fue, ahm, como recuerdo, estaba mirando a las innovaciones. Y, ahm, lo que veo y tú mirando a las posiciones de oficia de servicio de la comunidad es, es innovación. Ahm, está mirando el carga de trabajo y, ahm, ya sabes, transitiendo eso, así que, ya sabes, no, ya sabes, no ponemos más trabajo y presión en los recursos limitados que tenemos en el Departamento de Policía. Ahm, a veces tienen que trabajar a tiempo de horas solo para lograr parte de este cargo. Y eso, eso costará dinero también, ahm, lo cual aprecio el investir en asegurar que contratamos posiciones de oficia de servicio de la comunidad para tratar de transitar un poco eso, así que nuestros oficiales pueden hacer, ya sabes, lo que están, lo que están contratados para hacer, ahm, como oficiales aprobados, es seguridad pública. Y, ahm, así que aprecio que, ya sabes, ah, fabricando este proyecto. Ahm, yo, yo, yo habría, y he estado apoyando, manteniendolo, ahm, bajo la medida N y espero una discusión de política ahm, para asegurar que algunas de estas iniciativas, Che Guevara, que presentas a nosotros, ahm, son, son, son no descuidadas, ahm, que estamos, ahm, ya sabes, tomando en consideración. Has hecho un gran trabajo en tu, ahm, servicio para, ya sabes, el Departamento de Policía de West Sacramento en ser capaz de, ya sabes, trabajar con tu equipo, crear con ideas para nosotros considerar ahm, para ser capaces de servir mejor a la comunidad. Y la abertura hace mucho tiempo, hace muchos años cuando trajimos a Mark Sawyer bajo el financiamiento SB 82 para abordar la salud mental, ya sabes, las intervenciones de crisis. Y luego para mantenerlo en, ahm, bajo el departamento y también para proporcionar entrenamiento al Departamento de Policía. Ahm, ya sabes, sé que están, están bien entrenados ya en la intervención de crisis, pero creo que ha sido capaz de fitar muy bien en el Departamento de Policía para proporcionar entrenamiento continuo y luego, ya sabes, duplicando tu, ahm, ya sabes, esfuerzo ahm, a través de tener las intervenciones de crisis de la salud mental con la colaboración de la County Health and Human Services ahm, para asegurar que podemos continuar expandiendo los servicios. Estoy esperando tu presentación de Crisis Now ahm, porque creo que siempre estás en el correcto cheque, Che, así que aprecio el esfuerzo que has puesto en esto.
Bueno, gracias y sé que hemos tenido, ya sabes, apoyo, sé que esto es un item presupuestal ahora mismo y quiero dejarlo pasar, pero hemos tenido apoyo a través de toda esta Cámara y las iteraciones de las Cárceles antes de esto para apoyar esas cosas. Así que eso significa mucho porque nos ha permitido avanzar, ah, a donde estamos hoy. Y claramente, ahm, como puedes ver en mi en el futuro de hoy, estamos dispuestos a, a continuar, ahm, haciendo lo que podemos para estar en el conductor de nuestra propia evolución y avance, así que gracias.
Bien, gracias. Y, y como, ahm, ya sabes, dije, ya sabes, que, ah, el presupuesto, ya sabes, Roberta, que has preparado junto con Aaron, ah, siendo transparente y proporcionando toda la información que necesitamos, ahm, para tomar esas decisiones, que el consejo está proporcionando, proporcionando la guía y la recomendación para que podamos asegurar y, y como, ahm, el miembro del consejo Ladesma mencionó, para ampliar ese esfuerzo, ahm, con las expenditures de la medida G y para proporcionar, ahm, las expenditures y reportar sobre lo que estamos haciendo allí. El otro, ahm, punto que quería tomar un look fue, ahm, ah, el financiamiento SB 1383 que estamos poniendo en, ah, por 88,000. Y sé que hay un, un financiamiento, un banco de financiamiento estatal, y no sé si jamás podremos recibir reembolso por eso, pero quería solo señalar eso para nosotros en caso, ahm, ya sabes, que podríamos recibir reembolso en un futuro crédito del estado ah, porque había financiamiento reservado para eso. Además de eso, ahm, nosotros, nosotros no incluimos el financiamiento ARB porque estamos tomando una mirada, ahm, ya sabes, ah, acción congresional y, ahm, así que, ya sabes, eso es, eso es una posibilidad en el futuro ahm, para tomar una mirada de qué más podemos utilizar para la expenditure aquí en, ahm, estos presupuestos, entre estos presupuestos de presupuesto o presupuestos de presupuesto futuro que, ahm, ya sabes, estamos tomando una mirada. Tenemos un tiempo limitado para cuando eso necesita ser expandido. Ahm, pero también estamos tomando una mirada de posibilidades, ah, ah, encajando algunas recomendaciones de nuestro condado o socios non profit Vers Five, ahm, ha, ha presentado algunas recomendaciones, así que espero la posibilidad de, ah, abordar algunas de las preocupaciones que escuchamos, digamos, por ejemplo, de uno de los miembros que proporciona un comentario público, María García. Y también otras, otras oportunidades como el parque, ah, o el pool, ahm, implementar algunas de estas iniciativas. Y sé que John Archileta ha llamado a mí y estoy tomando una mirada al financiamiento ARB para el pool, ahm, tanto, ah, ya sabes, financiamiento de la ciudad y el condado, lo cual voy a explorar más para que podamos maximizar oportunidades porque es, ah, es un propuesta de 24 millones de dólares, ahm, propuesta, ya sabes, ese entero plan master de lo que he visto preparar y proporcionar guía sobre lo que necesitamos el financiamiento, cuánto financiamiento necesitamos para eso. Ah, yo, yo estoy muy preocupada por el, ya sabes, la salud, la salud mental y el bienestar de nuestros residentes en la comunidad de Bright Broderick. Ahm, y, y aprecio los inversiones que están siendo hechas en Club West. Quiero ver qué podemos hacer para proporcionar más outreach y educación, ahm, ya sea proporcionando, ahm, como un pequeño anuncio en el contrato, no sé si es suficiente. Ahm, pero sí, sí quiero proporcionar más outreach porque he notificado a la gente de ello y no están conscientes. Y, ahm, así que es como por word of mouth que está saliendo ahí. Ahm, y tal vez pudieramos poner eso en el dos por dos para incluir un elemento de agenda y figuring out how we can get maybe, ahm, pushing out information through the Washington Unified School District's, ahm, communication line. Y, ahm, tomando una mirada a otros recursos, ahm, y, y apoyo para nuestra juventud en el futuro y en el futuro próximo, ahm, como María ha expresado que esto ha sido un problema longo para nuestra juventud que son, ahm, ya sabes, que es, es comportamiento, creo, que es relacionado con estar cansado y, y tal vez no tener, ya sabes, supervisión. Los padres están tratando de encontrar formas de trabajar, ahm, durante el COVID, ahm, experiencia y, y, ya sabes, los niños son, son, creo que sabemos ahm, basado en la investigación que hay, ahm, que hay una crisis de salud mental alrededor de lo que hemos experimentado con la pandemia COVID-19 y niños, ahm, no teniendo acceso a recursos y no regresando a la escuela, pero hay un proceso de transición. Y creo que podríamos, ya sabes, hacer más trabajo y pondré eso en la agenda, ahm, ya sabes, y tomando una mirada no solo de este incidente en particular, pero qué otros recursos podemos hacer para colaborar. Y, ahm, ya sabes, Tracy ha estado trabajando duro en todo esto, ahm, y ha estado expandiendo mucho el programa de after school. Así que tal vez, ya sabes, hacemos el outreach en nuestras redes sociales, pero tal vez, ahm, colaborando con el Washington Unified School District para expandir eso. Y además de eso, ahm, proporcionando apoyo de transporte para nuestra juventud, a quienes, ahm, probablemente algunos de estos recursos, ahm, están en áreas de la ciudad donde no es accesible para nuestra juventud. Ese es uno de los mayores desafíos que he oído, ahm, de nuestra juventud es, ahm, transporte para llegar a un centro de recogida aquí en el lado sur. Y es un preocupante que he oído, así que, ahm, ya sabes, tal vez tomando una mirada vía vouchers o algo así. Y, ah, además de eso, no es como si no hubiera sido hecho, pero hemos estado hablando de ello y probablemente necesitemos hablar de ello, tal vez en el retiro o algo así. Ahm, ya sabes, aprecio, ya sabes, algo, ahm, que, que he hecho fue visitar el plantio de tratamiento de agua y William Robert, ya sabes, explicó y sé que el miembro del consejo Early, es que sabe William muy bien, ya sabes, bien. Ahm, pero, ahm, agua limpia, nosotros, nosotros vamos a ser, ya sabes, primero de todos, nosotros, ah, ah, no vamos a estar abordando un artículo en particular que se relaciona con el uso de agua, pero, ahm, pero agua limpia es extremadamente importante y realmente aprecio tener personal que ha elevado a nuestra atención las necesidades para asegurar que la instalación está funcionando bien y el plan de tratamiento de agua está siendo cuidado y, ahm, quiero continuar impresionando a nuestro personal para, ya sabes, continuar trayendo eso a nuestra atención. Ahm, y durante, ahm, el parque de la corporación, ah, ya sabes, cortado de rima, ahm, fue una oportunidad emocionante ver el, el, ya sabes, establecimiento de nuestro parque de la corporación. Y luego será un plan a largo plazo, he oído hablar del transición de una área a otra ah, y había un gasto asociado con eso. Ahm, y así, estoy esperando y estoy contenta de ver el investir aquí para eso. Ahm, con nuestro parque de la corporación, lo que pasa es que obtenemos nuestras carreteras mantenidas, como ves, la Capitela West, ah, muchos buenos hechos han pasado allí. Ah, obtenemos muchas cosas sobre el Parque Sur, ah, ah, ya sabes, la 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 Guasa, ahm, ya sabes, todas esas áreas que, que aún no han sido cuidadas y también el limpieza de las carreteras, ah, aprecio que haya sido presentado aquí ah, porque, ya sabes, como dibujo, me pongo a entrar en muchos de esos, ah, carreteras desiguales y, ya sabes, me preocupo por mí mismo por, ya sabes, caer. Pero también escucho de los residentes que les gustaría que las carreteras sean cuidadas, así que aprecio que esté, ahm, incluido en el presupuesto. Ah, y también el programa de verano que, ahm, veo añadido aquí, ahm, para nuestros hijos, yo, yo sé, vi muchos niños... Um, for our kids, I, I know I saw a lot of kids, as I took my grandson out there, a lot of kids really benefiting from that. And the partnership that we have with Washington Unified School District, I think is really good there, um, so glad to see we have that included. And just the um, the facelifts we're giving um, for the police department and the fire department. Um, you know, just giving them the uh, additional, you know, resources, so that they uh, you know, have, you know. Not only um, more comfortable but safe places um, to work in, given with the COVID um, epidemic and what's, what's happened, you know, the pandemic, what's happened. And, and working together in close quarters and um, not having the spacing, and hopefully now we can accomplish that. Um, and just want to say thank you and applaud them for, you know, being on the front lines. They, they didn't take time off, they worked probably more time. And had to um, have workarounds or, you know, varied work schedules, so that they can, you know, reduce the spread. Uh, and so I, you know, I appreciate all of, you know, what they've accomplished over the last two years, um, so that we can be safe. Um, you know, provide them with the safety as well. Uh, in addition, um, I'm glad that we do have the extension in Club West, um, so we can take a look at additional programming and, and that site. And, and um, you know, City Hall, you know, there's a lot of upgrades that we need to do there, provide support for our own, you know. You know, City Hall administration, um, you know, we, we want them to, you know, it's a very small, you know, location we're growing. Um, it's a growing city and the demands are placed on, on all of you. Um, because I, I, I go in there and I'm trying to, you know, I go in there for signatures and things like that, get things authorized. And, and I see the small cubicles, I just want to say, guys, I appreciate what you guys are, are doing there, um, you guys work really hard. Um, accomplish a lot in, in very small workstations, and um, so I, I really appreciate what you accomplish. Hopefully, you know, the, these investments are going to help you to feel a little more comfortable. Um, and uh, you know, just a lot of um, recommendations under Parks Rec. Um, Tracy, you and your team have been doing an incredible job um, in, in many areas um, for Parks and Rec. You know, from taking care of the gopher holes so that, you know, Mayor Protem Roscoe's, you know, children don't fall over. Um, but at least now you'll have the funding, um, and uh, let's take a look at, you know, um, what we can do to make the investments for the pool. Um, I know it's going to take a partnership with the school district. I, I, I see that we have yet to make some headway on that. Um, and, and we, and we do have some, uh, we did, you know, also approve some amendments um, on the trails um, as it relates to the school district, so. Um, we, we could, and Roberta, you got your work cut out for you on the rec center, getting that um, you know, bond taken care of. I appreciate what you're doing to, you know, to get that taken care of, um, you know, as, as part of our um, process to be able to, you know. Achieve budget capacity, that's a big ticket item right there. Um, so all that extra work that we've um, handed over to you to accomplish that, I appreciate very much. Um, and uh, you know, just uh, you know, for you, you know, getting new finance department, you know, support. You know, whatever it takes to make sure that, you know, we can, you can provide a budget, you know, and I would. I'm still, I'm still looking for a full budget, but you know, we want to get you, you know, staffed up. We want to make sure you have the support. Because we are adding more work on your plate, and I know you're working long hours um, to accomplish that, and you know, you do need the support to, to make that happen. Um, because it's important for the rest of, of the city and all the people that are relying on you, um, to do this excellent presentation that you provided to all of us tonight. Um, and, and bringing this all together, um, so that we can move forward um, and on a stable, you know, uh, track. As the city needs to grow, um, very knowledgeable, um, your expertise is um, valued among all the council members here. Um, so we greatly appreciate what you, what you accomplished um, in making this happen tonight. And I wanted to um, see with that if there, if we have a, you know, there, there's going to be, there's a recommendation. Um, and we'll need some motions for that. Motion to, oh, go for it, Councilmember Ledesma, I'm just like.
Uh, motion to uh, uh, approve the recommended actions on the, on the resolutions with. Uh, the amendments as stated, um, as stated, I think in, in both memo and verbally, I think they're the one. Thank you.
There you go. Madam, please call the roll, uh, Councilmember Ledesma moved, Councilmember Early seconded.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Roscoe.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. Thank you, this item is approved, Roberta, we'll get some press.
Thank you, I just want to quickly respond to your comment about a, a, a budget book. We're, we're actually working to implement a digital budget book. Um, which we will for sure have for our next three-year budget, but um, it, it may be available in, in some form um, by the time we get to midterm. So we hired a new budget manager who um, is focused on that, so you will get your.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate all the, all the feedback and the positive out, thank you.
Okay, next, under the regular agenda item is item fifteen under Community Development, uh, which. Would have been consideration of a presentation and first reading of ordinance twenty-two dash eight repealing and adding section thirteen point oh four article. Nine of the West Sacramento Municipal Code relating to water conservation, Ms. Booz, you have a request for us.
I do, Mayor Guerrero and members of the council, Andrea House, I'm the Community Development Director. I'm here to respectfully request a continuance of item fifteen, uh, which uh, relates to the water conservation ordinance. Uh, we would like to do so in order for us to have a more robust uh, uh, public outreach uh, conversation. And I will return, would ask that we return uh, to the January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two council meeting. Thank you, that includes my comment.
Thank you, I'll accept a motion to um, to uh, for the recommendation that Ms. Um. House, yes, Mayor Protem, was that, who was it?
No.
Sorry. Oh, Councilmember Alcala.
I second the motion.
Okay, Councilmember Early seconds, Madam, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Roscoe.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye, thank you, Ms. House, and we look forward to seeing you in a future agenda item.
Thank you.
Next onto the regular agenda item is um, number sixteen, under Economic Development and Housing. Is consideration of Bridge District twenty twenty-four plan and adoption of resolution twenty-one dash eighty-three, amending the capital improvement. Program budget for the proposed twenty twenty-four plan projects. And Ms. Katie Jacobson, Department Director with the Economic Development and Housing Department, I think you'll be doing a presentation on this.
Yes, thank you, good evening, Mayor Guerrero and council members, um, I would like to be able to screen share a presentation for you.
Yes, I, I think somebody will do that, right? There we go.
So, tonight staff is presenting the third five-year capital improvement phase of the Bridge District Investments. Called the twenty twenty-four plan. As council is aware, the Bridge District is envisioned as a dense mixed-use district that will take about twenty, fifteen to twenty more years to fully build out. And that will come about in phases, both for the public infrastructure and amenities and the private development. The backbone and supplemental public facilities that realize the city's vision or build out of this district. Are identified in the specific plan, Infrastructure Financing District One and Community Facilities District. Twenty-seven in the formation documents. Tonight staff is recommending that council make the Sequo findings and approve the Bridge District twenty twenty-four investment plan. Comprised of eleven million and nine capital projects, of which two point two million was invested last May. Adopt resolution twenty-one eighty-three appropriating the eight million seven hundred ninety-eight and one hundred eighty-five dollar remaining. Budgets for the twenty twenty-four Plan CIP projects in Bridge District Fund four oh five. Um, with funded by um, twenty-seven, I'm sorry, CFD twenty-seven bond proceeds. And I F D revenue, I F D one revenue and transferring I F D one fund balance of a million three hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred thirty-one dollars. To a twenty nineteen plan project and direct staff to return to council with recommended additional positions. Associated with management and implementation and oversight to complete the twenty twenty-four plan projects. Like to start with a quick history and summary of the Bridge District Transition and Investments. The Bridge District that you see today has been realized through a public-private partnership between the city and property owners. That began after the stadium was completed and has received significant financial support from federal and state smart growth partners. This is an aerial of the district after the baseball stadium was built, just before the removal of the rail service on the river. Was made possible by a two thousand and five transaction that formed CFD twenty-three and committed redevelopment funds. As you can see, there are railcars along the river that were, have been relocated from the riverfront. A cement terminal has been relocated to the port, and in the photo you can still see the grade separated highway that is now Tower Bridge Gateway. A city arterial. Um, as you can see from this, the district was primarily uh, comprised of eroding industrial uses at this time. In two thousand and seven, the city and property owners formed a collaborative task force for specific plan updates. Formation of financing districts and developing global uh, development agreement terms. The collective Bridge District documentation established that the city is to act as a master developer in the district. And in concert with the property owners, invest in infrastructure and amenities that are timed to support and serve development as needed. The specific plan financing element allocates and identifies infrastructure investments into two categories. Backward backbone and supplemental facilities. However, the council can approve both backbone and supplemental facilities at any time. By twenty ten, the city had adopted a new specific plan, formed CFD twenty-seven and CFDR. These revenues are generated by special tax assessments on Bridge District property and dedicated within the Bridge District. The city had approved two development agreements and affordable housing agreements, accomplished over seventy property acquisitions for infrastructure. And secured twenty-three point one million of Prop one C funds for infrastructure, which was combined with other local, state and federal funds. To create the twenty fourteen plan, and this is the district in twenty ten when the twenty fourteen plan infrastructure was being installed. The proposition one C funds required that the city produce seven hundred and thirty-one market rate and affordable residential units. So the twenty fourteen plan was focused on the infrastructure, including a large water tank, roads, lift station. The Riverwalk and a, and Garden Park, so this shows the completion of the infrastructure around the area of the district. Where the residential commitment was focused. The twenty nineteen plan was the next five-year Bridge District CIP, which included Mill Street Pier, Public Art. Riverfront Street Extension and Fifth Street Cycle Track Widening and the fifth, fifth and Bridge Street Surface Parking Lot and the Barn. The Riverfront Fifth Street Cycle Track Project is the only project not completed, but it is expected to initiate construction by March of this year. In twenty eighteen, the city completed ten million of borrowing for the streetcar project, which was to be under construction in twenty twenty-two. However, this project is now transitioned to be a light rail service along Tower Bridge Gateway. This is a current view of the Bridge District Development west of Fifth Street. It does not yet show the West Mix Use Project, which you may have all um, noted is coming, is under construction. And is coming up along the northern waterfront area of the district. And that project will add over two hundred and fifty residential units. And with the city's second-phase West Gateway Place Affordable Project, complete the Prop one C housing obligations. Based on last year's infrastructure District One revenue, it's estimated that the city has added over ninety million dollars of new assessed value. On the property tax roll since twenty fourteen in this district. The remaining twenty nineteen plan Riverfront Extension and Fifth Street uh, Cycle Track is starting construction in February or March. As identified in the report, when the streetcar project evolved to become a light rail project, staff and property owners in the core. Uh, neighborhood were working on investments to support a large commercial development. When the pandemic hit this project, pressed pause and staff began working with the property owners on this plan. Which did advance slowly due to COVID requirements and workload. This graphic depicts the location and a description of the seven proposed capital facility, park, trail. And roadway capital improvement projects that are within the Bridge District twenty twenty-four plan. The twenty twenty-four facilities' construction is primarily focused on expanding riverfront access, trails and amenities in this area. And a first-phase work on a roadway in the core neighborhood, Grand Street. Starting from the top, I'll just um, provide a quick uh, explanation. The first project is uh, uh, required to create connectivity between the Bridge District. And City Hall and the Police Department, so it's simply uh, installing conduit and fiber cable underneath Tower Bridge. Gateway to create this uh, connectivity. The next project is to install a phase-two Riverwalk improvements adjacent to the West project. These prod, these improvements and amenities will um, uh, widen the uh, Riverwalk itself. And um, underwent a design process a couple of years ago, however. Those, that particular project is pending and will depend on um, further discussions between the city and that property owner. Um, next, we're acquiring the remaining Grand Street right-of-way between Fifth and Riverfront Street. That a portion of that, as you can see on this graphic, was already acquired for it when we built the surface parking lot. And then to also complete the first phase of that street. Also, we'll be adding additional access quarters, which we refer to as universal streets at Market and Brandon Bridge Streets. And that is paving and lighting to create more connectivity between Riverfront Street and the Riverwalk. We purchased the Riverwalk Plaza land in twenty twenty-one. This twenty twenty-four plan includes additional funds for the first phase of improvements. The plan includes acquiring the remaining Fifth Street right-of-way between the Highway fifty off-ramp and Pioneer Bridge. One of the major projects and important projects in the twenty twenty-four plan is an extension of the Riverwalk southward. From Mill Street Pier to the edge of the Semex parcel, which is the edge of the district. Ultimately, the Riverwalk will connect with a, a Riverwalk that will be built in Pioneer Bluff. And part of this Riverwalk extension project will be to explore with Caltrans potential uses and amenities. That the city can place underneath the Pioneer Bridge structure as the city now holds a long-term uh, ground lease of that property. And finally, to install a uh, forty-foot wide access path connecting Riverfront Street. To the newly-built Riverwalk, the south of Pioneer Bridge. The pre, the twenty twenty-four plan funding also includes pre-development, technical and regulatory work. Including planning and engineering, storm drainage modeling and design for the west portion of the Bridge District, which was not completed in twenty-ten. And needs to be modeled and uh, further designed where it needs to be implemented and constructed. And ultimately, um, that's important in terms of the developers in that area, having certainty about the storm drainage requirements. That they will need to install and for the city to also install the storm drainage requirements um, in time for that development. Other specific plan updates include integrating final roadway alignments into the zoning. Um, reducing retail requirements, transit and out, further transit analysis, traffic modeling and sequo. The roadway work is in the west area of the district, uh, west of Fifth Street. And it's um, creating connectivity with the Pioneer Bluff circulation and is consistent with the Broadway Bridge analysis. The current specific plan noted that there was additional roadway modifications needed west of Fifth Street. And anticipated to occur um, later on to meet uh, urban circulation standards and requirements. Also, the updates are to analyze travel changes. Given remote working um, and the, and the evolution of the workplace. Um, and the property owners also have requested to assess the potential for additional uh, crossings. Or um, amenities within the river as like bicycle paths or aerial trams. So that those have been included as part of the analysis of the Riverwalk extension. The two thousand and twenty-four plan project budgets include city staff costs. And one of the council recommendations tonight is directing staff to return with recommended staffing changes in order to manage and oversee this project workload. It is expected that additional staff will be needed as it is a significant new workload that has not been resourced to meet the timing objectives for investment of these funds. I want to also note that these budgets are very preliminary, and it is expected that they will need adjustments as we complete scoping and designing. Additionally, council can modify the plan in the future if needed to respond to any emerging new opportunities in the market that were not known or contemplated at the time of this action. I'd like to also add that Dan Ramos and Randy Koss are here representing the Bridge District Property Owners. If council has any questions for them, then that concludes my um presentation.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Jacobson. Bring it back to council for any questions or comments? Okay, now I'll open it up for public comment. I think we have some requests.
Yes, we have. Well, we have Mr. Ramos. I'll go ahead and let um
Okay, am I on?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Good evening, Merrick Gero and members of City Council. And this is the first time I've been able to address the council with Dr. Early on board. So congratulations and welcome to the council. Appreciate this. First time being able to address you.
Thank you.
That just wanted to, obviously, we support the recommended actions that Katie has laid out here tonight. And specifically want to point out and congratulate Katie and her staff. And I know, Erin, you had a lot to do with this, but this was a lot of work. And Katie's been working on this for with us for the last two years through this COVID stuff. And we're really appreciative of the work product that she's produced and very supportive of of the actions going forward. So just wanted to make sure we got the right accolades for all the hard work that's gone on tonight or gone on tonight, but also over the last few years for this project. So we're definitely on board. One one comment that I have, this is me personally, and I'm actually had the chance to review this with the Clark Pacific folks, and they asked me to represent tonight as a property owner too. And and they're very supportive of this plan. One of the things that we all need to focus on, I just wanted to kind of pledge some of the property owner's support is that we need to kind of figure out this transit. I know we have the light rail possibility here, but it that might not be the best way to go anymore in terms of some support on the other side of the river. And we want to pledge our support to sit down and work with the city and the city staff and come up with a transit option that will meet the needs. That Katie keeps reminding us, you guys, you do five hundred jobs. We got to have a a robust public transit here. And I think we can do that. But we wanted to just show our support, sit down and figure out how we can address that and do it in a very economical and well-serving manner for the not only for the bridges, but for the entire community. So anyway, just wanted to, those are my comments. And we really look forward to working with the staff and to bring on this this great amenity to this city. And hopefully, I know we're working very hard to try to bring in commercial users here. And believe it or not, there's some there is some activity going on. And hopefully, we can bring those forward too in the in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos.
And we have Randy Koss.
Mr. Koss?
I think I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Thanks. I'm mayor and council. Nice to address you. Just got to say, it's really impressive to see what's happened on the on this side of the river, West Sacramento side, to engage the riverfront effort that's taken place over decades is incredible. Because, you know, the region doesn't engage the riverfront as much as it should in general. And it's nice to see what's taken place from someone who moved back when Mark Friedman interviewed me to work for the Kings and worked for four years on the other side of the river. I got to tell you, it's great to be working on this side of the river. So I think what the city is doing and has endeavored to do and what the developers and owners are doing on this part of the river will be something that's the best place to be in the region by far. We have some exciting projects built. You know, we're working on some projects, hopefully get started on River One. You know, first half next year, but also a lot of projects in the Bridge District. And this infrastructure improvement that's taking place today and the infrastructure improvement that's in this plan and future plans is important for that vital connection to activity along the riverfront, the infrastructure to bring new businesses there. And as well as new community members, we have a lot of units being added. We're in the stages of planning some large projects of our own, of our own. So the active riverfront and the future of a, you know, plaza on the river where you would see retail in the future to benefit the whole district is important. So like, man, Katie and Erin and team and everyone for the hard work. It takes a lot of work. But, you know, some of the pretty pictures together and more work to actually get it done. But it's nice to see the progress. And I'd say we're in the third or fourth inning of nine-inning game. And excited to see the development as it moves forward. So thanks to the staff for all their hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Koss. Any other requests to speak, Madam Clerk?
Yeah, it looks like we just got one, Maria Grahava.
I just wanted to also thank the staff and for the progress also. West Sacramento has always been considered the other half of Sacramento. And I think the new mayor is always be thanked for that progress also. And so thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Any other requests to speak? No?
No, no other speakers.
Okay, we close the public comment, bring it back to council. Are there any council members who have any comments or questions?
I just wanted to ask one mayor.
Sure.
Member Alcala.
Katie?
You and I have had some great conversations about wonderful new things we could do to draw people, West Sacramento festivals and stuff. I loved your life festival. That was so phenomenal, you know? And I'm just wondering, though, when we do Bridge District, we are going to be having a public market, hopefully this year.
Yes, that's my understanding.
Is that considered in the the planning with the Bridge District as well? Has it been? I know I'm reading here, it says likely CIP appropriations require adjusting during design phase. I know they're just rough estimates, but is that something that's also sort of being considered, you know?
Yes.
Permanent?
Yes, absolutely. So that's one of the pushes to get some hardscape and widening of the Riverwalk to allow for more boost to actually, we could mount something like a festival or farmer's market. But the plaza is over an acre, and that would, if we can hardscape that soon, allow for a farmer's market. But we also have a plan to do the farmer's market in Riverfront Street and just shut down Riverfront Street. And the police department is on board with that. And I know that the city manager's office has a procurement right now to select a vendor that can mount a farmer's market. So I think everybody's very excited about that potential.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right. I just, Katie, oh, Mayor Pretem Roscoe.
Oh, wait. Thank you.
Oh, sure. Okay.
Councilmember Early, go ahead.
I'm sure. I just. Yeah, no, it's it's actually really brief. It's amazing to see the transformation that's happened from two thousand and ten to now. So, you know, I would be remiss unless I said something that speaks to the leadership of this council over the years. It also speaks to the dedication of our staff and and our partnership. So amazing progress, and I'm looking forward to seeing what happens next.
Thank you.
Mayor Pretem Roscoe?
Thank you. Yeah, I am with Councilmember Early. You know, see just the transformation over the last decade and a half. You know, we've been talking about the activation of the riverfront for long before any of us that are remaining in the meeting, not on the council. And I'm, you know, it's sad that Councilmember Ledesma isn't here for this item. I know he and I both are conflicted this evening, but he, I know would have a lot to say because he was pretty instrumental in the development of the vision and really very invested in ensuring that the vision for the riverfront property that we have came to fruition. And, you know, just in two thousand and twenty-one, we, in our strategic planning agenda, we consider the thoughtful development of the riverfront district and making it the gem of the urban core, as we said it. And, you know, talking about making it a place where we would attract businesses and and visitors and events. And we talked about the farmer's market and trying to activate that space. But just making it a place for people to gather for a myriad of events and, you know, maybe attracting a lot more businesses in the area. And you just drive by on a Friday or Saturday night, you can see folks just in swarms in the outdoor venue. It's so unique. It's so cool to watch. And I don't think anybody, I mean, there are a lot of folks that that could never have envisioned it being at such a destination. If you go in, I mean, a lot of folks are from West Sac, but there are a lot more folks that are coming from a lot of different other places just because they want to be a part of this. And so to see it develop even more and having more retail. I mean, if we consider perhaps retail cannabis in the future. You know, having, I can, I have a vision. We talked about this in the past, you know, the potential of having, you know, a little swanky district down there where there's lovely retail establishments and perhaps something that's on the high-end scale, but that's a later conversation. But, you know, I was looking at the strategic planning agendas, and, you know, we go all the way back to before two thousand and fifteen. It was about, you know, construction of the barn and then the barn events and programming, and then Pioneer Bluff Stone Lock reuse and riverfront investment strategies. And I just, it's been a prevalent priority for this council. I'm glad to see that we're moving forward with more investments. It really is wonderful to come home at the end of the day and drive over the bridge and look to my right as I exit the Jefferson and say, I love the diversity that we have in our city. Great places to live regardless of your interest. And now, great place to also not only live, but, you know, work and play and recreate. Thank you. Madam Mayor, I'll go and pass forth to you.
I'm sorry? I think, can we mute? Maria, your mic, can you mute? Madam Clerk, can you mute Maria Grahava's? Thank you so much. Okay. Are you done, Mayor Pretem Roscoe?
I am, yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, so I just want to say, Ms. Jacobson, you've done a great job, you know, along with you know, the the landowners along the riverfront. I remember on the Economic Development Advisory Council, the councils were also, you know, played a role in providing information and guidance to council back then. And the day, you know, when things were first starting, you know, Mr. Friedman presented to us on his vision of the barn. You know, the connectivity that he was hoping to create through the bike trails. We also had the street, the streetcar planned along West Capitol Avenue, going going up along West Capitol Avenue where, you know, within subsequently passed, you know, the measures for flood control and for the for the streetcar. And I'm hearing loud and clear Mr. Ramos's comment on making sure that whatever we do and progresses in the future for public transportation, that it is, you know, taken into consideration. I do know that we have probably, probably maybe three years, maybe two and a half years ago, in a strategic planning retreat, we have talked about alternative methods of public transportation. Because if the, you know, cost is too high, you know, we probably probably can't afford it, or if any other barriers for the light rail happens. You know, we just want to make sure we can pivot quickly. And I think that's the message I'm hearing loud and clear, to ensure that that all the infill growth, all the businesses. And Mr. Koss, I, you know, River One, we want that goal. We want, we definitely need a River One to happen. It's such a beautiful project. But we also have shelters growing there, all the, all those employees that were going to have to move from one area of the city to the other. So, you know, we have a lot happening along the riverfront, and it's exciting, you know, to be here together with all of you council members. I know you've all served in one capacity or another in the past. But or even even your family members have. But being being able to serve, you know, for the city as a commissioner over the years, and now, you know, being mayor, and also in the beginning of the year as mayor, I sat down with all the landowners just to have a conversation about their vision. And and noticing here that what they were talking about here, Katie, I think you just done a great job integrating that vision, you know, making those modifications and making those changes happen as we see ourselves moving forward in a new era of how we are going to, you know, just outdoor, you know, recreation is now much more bigger for us than it ever has been in the past. And just appreciate the sensitivity for the landowners and their interest to seeing the success, not only for their investment, but the success of the community and this investment that is being recommended here, you know, for the funding and for the staffing requirements, so that we can meet the demand and the needs that that this is going to entail for the future, which I've been very supportive of since the beginning. I've been serving as a commissioner now as, you know, then council now as mayor. So I greatly appreciate what you're doing here. And with that, I'll accept, if you have any other comments, Ms. Jacobson, to wrap up for tonight? Nope. Okay, I'll accept a motion to move this forward. So move.
I'm gonna go second the recommended.
Madam Clerk, I'll let you take a pick on all of them.
I think I got the the motion in. I don't know who got the second.
I I'm seconded the recommended act.
Okay, so I missed it because I think Maria was on again.
I heard two moves. I heard Councilmember Early. So Councilmember Alcala moved this one. So I think I'll take her as a second, and then we'll go forward.
So Alcala second and Dante's first?
Yes, got it.
Okay. We'll call Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Mayor Pretem Roscoe?
Aye.
And Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. All right.
Absent is Ledesma, correct?
Right, yes. All right. So with that, we will now move to our regular agenda. We are not going to have item number seventeen. That was in the beginning of the council presentation by city manager, that that item will not be taken up tonight. So we will now move to regular agenda item number eighteen, which under the Police Department is consideration of a workshop on the Crisis Now service model. And our Police Chief Strange will be providing the presentation. Thank you for hanging in there, both of you.
Absolutely. And for clarification, I won't be providing the presentation. But my colleague Karen Larson, Director of Health and Human Services for Yellow County, will be providing this presentation. So as as she gets that primed and ready to go with the clerk, I just would like to add at the beginning here that the Crisis Now model for improving our community-based response to those suffering from issues related to mental illness or substance use disorders or other behavioral health concerns is supported by every member of the county's law enforcement community. An important factor, because I think it also recognizes sort of to my comments earlier about being strategic, thoughtful, and inclusively informed about how we work to optimize services that we provide to our community that helps serve them clearly, but also from my vantage point, really helped improve public safety. This is one of those measures. And so this presentation tonight will help inform you about the Crisis Now model, the things that we think will benefit our communities across the county. But also, it represents a embedded request for your support of those concepts. It does identify some aspect of anticipated financial contribution that the city will make. But tonight, we're really just looking for your support in the concept as we will look to explore ways as a city to fund this in the future. So with that, I will turn it over to Karen.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Guerrero and council members for having me tonight. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna do my best to make this brief because it's already past my bedtime. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the crisis now model. This is an evidence based model that's been adopted as an evidence-based practice by SAMSA, the Federal Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, and been successfully implemented in several other states and counties. And so I'm really excited to be able to bring this to Yolo County. And I'll share about the model itself, some of the outcomes, we're going to be tracking the costs associated with it and answer any questions the council may have. So I think this slide's important just to have some context. I think we all know that over the past almost two years now, we've all moved and everybody we love has moved somewhere from the right of this slide a little more to the left. And we know our children and youth maybe have struggled a little more. But when we're talking about the crisis now model, we're really talking about this far left column. We're really talking about those folks whose behaviors either from substances or mental health, other mental health conditions are such that they require or have historically required law enforcement intervention. So those folks that are a danger to themselves, a danger to others, or gravely disabled due to their psychotic symptom. And doesn't mean these other folks, the folks who are struggling or in some of these other categories don't need help. But for the purposes of crisis now, we're really talking about this far left column. I also think it's important to kind of talk about what we've tried in the past and because, you know, we all learn from our history. And we had a program for several years in Yolo County. This predated my time as the county mental health director called Mobile Crisis. Suicide Prevention actually would be dispatched to our hospitals to help assess people for whether or not they should be 51-50ed. And the, that was replaced in 2014 with an SB 82 grant that we received. That was our first attempt to have co-responders embedded with our law enforcement partners. And it was a great program. But at the end of the three years, it wasn't, it just wasn't financially sustainable. We hadn't done enough of the pre-work to make sure that we had a sustainability plan. And we had five clinicians placed throughout the county. It was about a million dollars a year and they were averaging about two calls a day. So we had to do some retooling and we decided after that attempt, maybe we need a place for people to go and the, and our law enforcement partners to be able to drop people off. And so that's when we opened up the urgent care in West Sacramento. We chose West Sacramento because you don't have a hospital like our other two big cities. And so we thought this is perfect. Our West Sac PD won't have to drive all the way to Davis. You know, well, the other jurisdictions would probably be willing to come over here. And it didn't really work out that way. We didn't, again, get very much traffic despite having it open seven days a week, extended hours. And so we brought everybody together, all our hospital partners, all our law enforcement partners, and we said, we have to do better. And guess what? We don't think we can figure this out on our own. Maybe we're not figuring, we're, we're not the most innovative folks and, and not the subject matter experts in figuring out the best crisis continuum for our county. And so we partnered with the Mental Health Services Oversight and Accountability Commission, and they funded a crisis now learning collaborative. So they brought in these national experts and they did 13 learning sessions with us. We involved all of our law enforcement partners again, and the hospitals and NAMI and our local mental health board in those learning sessions. And then they did separate TA sessions with us to help us really hone in on what exactly we would need in terms of beds and, and call volume and those kinds of things. And so it was very helpful. And some of the other things down on this bottom row that you'll notice, we do crisis intervention training. We use Mental Health Services Act dollars for that. So any first responder in Yolo County, we offer crisis intervention training using the Memphis model, which is a 40-hour model, and have a pretty good uptake. I think West Sacramento actually participates in a different opportunity, but that is an, an offering for any of our first responders. And actually, some of our correctional officers are now participating in that. And, and when we went back to our, our law enforcement partners, they said, we want our co-responders back. We really miss having co-responders. They taught us a lot and we appreciated having them with us. And so the county said, well, okay, let's share the cost of those positions then. And so that's what we've been doing since the beginning of this last fiscal year. And as you know, West Sacramento has two co-responders. The other cities each have one and probation and the sheriff's department share one as well. And the district attorney's office actually started diverting some drug charges a year ago in January, and which is another way we're kind of trying to help retrain folks to give people help and get them the services they need so they stop engaging in the behaviors that get them involved with criminal justice system. And we're working to try and connect with some of our, our different dispatch locations. Coming in July of this next year, 988 will go live, which is a new number for mental, people in mental health crisis. And so it's going to be critical for us to have technology links between 911 and 988 and our services. And so we've started doing some of that behind the scenes work for that. So this is kind of what our current community crisis flow looks like. It, if it feels overwhelming to look at this slide, I would invite you to try and imagine hearing voices or being under the influence of substances and trying to figure out how to navigate these systems. But for the most part, most of our folks are funneling through our hospital emergency departments. And if there's one thing we've learned over the past 18 plus months, is that our emergency departments have some other critical jobs that they should attend to besides dealing with folks in behavioral health crisis. And, and aside from that not being a very therapeutic environment for folks in mental health or behavioral health crises, there's not, they don't have capacity to do a lot of the discharge planning. So folks can be linked up with the necessary services to keep them from recycling through these systems. And so what we've learned in other states throughout the country is that these, by having all these folks funnel through our emergency departments, oftentimes folks are waiting days, not just hours. And that this is costing our health systems millions and millions of dollars, not to mention the kind of folks who are in need, who have physical health conditions that can't get the care they need because beds are being taken up by folks with behavioral health conditions that can be better served elsewhere. So this is what we know about here, our, our stats here in Yolo County. About 50% of the folks that come into our emergency departments on a 51-50 hold are released back into the community without receiving any inpatient treatment. And of the 50% that go to inpatient treatment, almost half of those stay less than four days, which means they could probably benefit from a different level of treatment aside from inpatient psychiatric hospitalization. And then on our criminal justice side, so that's the other place where a lot of our folks end up that are in crises, about 70% of all of our inmates booked into jail are released within three days. And, and many of those, it's because of substance-related incidents, right? They're drunk, drunken disorderly, those kinds of things. They're intoxicated and it's causing them to have some concerning behaviors or they're known as kind of frequent flyers. And so we're proposing with this model that there are other ways to serve those individuals that probably increase their likelihood of success in our community if we get it right. Okay, I'm, I don't know if I'm going to be able to play this video. So I'm just gonna wing it. If I can't play the video, I'll move on. Oh, it's, can you hear it?
No. Well, we can see it.
Okay, I have no idea how to make you hear it. So I'll send you all the link to the video. It's worth watching.
Okay.
And you can maybe share it with Councilmember Ledesma. Nope, we're gonna go by there. I'll summarize kind of the model of a crisis now. The cool thing about that video is it does go into the, some of the outcomes that have been experienced in Maricopa County. And that's down in Arizona. And I think it's the third most populous county in the United States. And they've had this crisis now model longer than any other state or jurisdiction. And they've had really remarkable outcomes. So the video is worth the watch if you get a chance. And, but these are the four core elements of the crisis now model. The first is a high-tech crisis center. It's a 24/7 call center that has some other technological capabilities in terms of tracking call times and, and doing those warm handoffs that I talked about between the different numbers. And what I will say is that we, the county, already fully fund a 24/7 access line for people in mental health crisis. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. We definitely want to improve it, add some of those technological bells and whistles as we move into this next phase. And the state has some funding coming out right now that will help support some of that transformation. So the second component is the 24/7 mobile crisis. We have some of this. So we have our co-responders. They are not 24/7. They have extended hours. You know, for West Sacramento, you have seven days a week. But we don't have human beings that can respond every day, all day long, at any hour. And I will also say about these mobile crisis teams that in, if we wanted to maintain fidelity to the crisis now model, those responders wouldn't always go out with law enforcement. That, that over time, the vision is that clinicians will go out without law enforcement with, with a co-responder who has lived experience. Now, will there be times where you always want to have law enforcement with you? For sure. We, we want to make sure that our community members are safe, that our employees are safe, we're going out. And, and so we are partnering with all of the jurisdictions to kind of thread that needle and, and navigate it over time. So the third component, this is really the biggest transformation for our system. We don't have this portion right now and it's the most costly, is a crisis stabilization program. So what we're proposing is to have a 24/7 crisis receiving slash sobering center. So it's a, it would be an opportunity where our law enforcement or other first responders could drop off individuals under the influence in a psychiatric distress, whatever the case may be. And that, those folks could get the treatment and care that they need and get linked up to services on the outside. Keeps them out of the emergency department, keeps them out of the jail, and gets our officers back on the street doing the job they were trained to do. This fourth column has a little less to do with the model. It's really more about the, the theoretical perspective and the, and the, the kind of things that are woven throughout being trauma-informed, being recovery-oriented, really the, the way we approach the work and the spirit with which we treat the individuals in need. So this is kind of our vision for the crisis now flow. It may still look as messy because you still have all the same players who need to get their folks help. But at the center of this model, you'll notice we have this recovery sobering center and they're clearly linking folks on that outside with the care that they need. And so I'm, I'll talk a little, I'll go into a little more detail on the whole slide. The great thing about this model, I kind of already said it, is that law enforcement clinicians and first responders can bypass the emergency room. They go directly to this receiving and sobering center. Upon arrival at the receiving and sobering center, they're in and out within five to seven minutes. I can't promise this is going to happen, this five to seven minutes is going to happen the first year, but that is what they found in everywhere where they've implemented this elsewhere. And I think the big thing, you know, when we start talking about costs, and I'll, I'll talk about this in a little more detail on a couple of slides, but, but this is really the sweet spot for law enforcement, right? Right now, your officers drive all the way to Davis because that is, believe it or not, the nearest hospital, which is kind of a drive, you know, you gotta go over that causeway. And then you gotta come back over the causeway. And then they have to wait in the emergency department for the, for their person to be taken in. And with COVID, those waits have been quite extended and they're right now up over an hour oftentimes. So that means not only is there the time transporting the individual to the hospital, waiting in the hospital, and then driving back across that causeway to get to West Sac. You know, that's all time that we could avoid with a crisis receiving sobering center. So what happens after they get out of the center, they're linked to whatever level of care makes sense for them. There will be times where somebody comes to the crisis receiving center and we say, hey, you know what? This person's too acute. They need to go to inpatient care. What they've found in the crisis now model, that that's really less than 3% of the time that that happened. But they, but they will have an opportunity to be linked with other community services and supports, be linked to other support groups. We will have psychiatric providers on site who can help them adjust medications as needed. And then help the folks link up with things like housing and other supports that they might need. One of the things that every jurisdiction has asked is, well, if this is in our community, are you going to take the people back where they came from? And the answer is yes. So when someone is discharged, we'll make sure they go back to their home, community of origin, wherever, whoever brought them in was. Now I'm going to talk a little bit about moving to some of the outcomes. These are some of the, the broad outcomes that they found in the other states and counties that they, where they've implemented crisis now. And we all stand to benefit from this. So the county stands to benefit because we spend several million dollars a year on inpatient psychiatric hospitalization and we think we can avoid some of that. It, some of this is cost avoidance. So like, we're going to save jail bed days on this, but we still have those jail beds. So it's a similar story when I start talking about savings of police officers or firefighters for that matter. It, it has more to do with that, that time spent that I was talking about with, you know, transporting individuals to the hospital, waiting in the hospital room, driving back. So that's really the savings. And, and it can't be overstated, the bad outcomes that we can often avoid when we have services like this available. You can't put a price tag on those things, but we know that when we get people the right level of help and care, and if we can stabilize them and reduce their reliance on our systems, we, we all save money, multiple systems save money. And the hospitals also stand to save quite a bit of money. They have these people disproportionately filling up their emergency departments and they often don't get paid for them past a certain number of hours or those kinds of things. And probably most importantly above all of that money is that we have human beings who are suffering, who are sitting in emergency departments for days sometimes. And it's worse, depending on how many comorbidities you have, the worse it is. But some of our kids sit in emergency departments for longer than adults because they're harder to find place for. So this reduced total psychiatric boarding by 45 years is, you know, if any of you have ever been to an emergency department, you know that it's a very stressful environment. And for anybody in a psychiatric or, or behavioral health crises, it's not an environment that's conducive to getting better. So we want to avoid that. And I, this is just kind of reiterating some of the things that were in the video that you didn't get to see. That, that in Maricopa, they were able to save officer time that, that saved, they were able to decrease their SWAT deployments quite a bit, which I thought was really interesting. And they saw a reduction in arrests and incarcerations, which saved them quite a bit of money. And I'm just going to pause to see if the chief wants to say anything on these slides because I'm talking about my law enforcement partner.
I appreciate it. I think you hit, hit pretty well on many of these aspects where we talked about, you know, cost saving. you know, cost savings, um, really explaining them as that cost avoidance, or another way to look at it, um, when we consider these opportunity costs, when we're describing being out of our city, uh, to go to Davis where our nearest hospital is within the county. Uh, you know, we're talking two, four, sometimes even as much as five hours that we're spending outside of our city on a single call. So when we think about the resources that we currently allocate, and maybe not even think about reducing that, but how we can reallocate those, the use of those funds. And again, I talked earlier about optimization. I think that's the key word here. And, uh, the reality is, as Karen explained, you know, this is a paradigm shift for our profession. Um, our police officers locally have a pretty good track record of working with folks in crisis and helping de-escalate that and, and achieving successful outcomes. But that does not mean that we are the experts in this. Just because we're good at it doesn't mean that we should be the ones still doing that. So, so much of the conversation that has surfaced through exploring options like this. But frankly, even through the larger conversations about the place of leasing in our communities across the nation and here locally, um, this really serves well to, um, continue to evolve our response and challenge the, you know, the traditional ways of doing things so that we can arrive at a place that puts us in the best position to, to achieve the best outcomes on so many different levels. So, thanks Karen.
Uh, this slide just talks a little bit more about the health systems savings. Um, I will just share that we have asked our local health systems to contribute to this, um, project in addition to asking each of the cities and, uh, and actually UC Davis as well. And they have made, uh, commitments, uh, not only of community benefit dollars, but of, um, a special fund we have called Maddie Funds, which is a kind of a fine on the um, ambulances that goes to the hospitals. So, um, between the two health systems, the contribution will be well over two million dollars over the three years. Um, and, and our hope really is that we will be able to track the data well enough that we'll be able to prove savings to all the systems and ask the systems to reinvest some portion of that savings back into continuing the sustainability. Um, so this, uh, again, this just talks about the health systems and, and the savings they've had in the other, uh, areas. So here's how much it's gonna cost us locally, um, for this whole, uh, crisis now model. The crisis line, as I mentioned, we already fund fully through Health and Human Services. Uh, mobile crisis, we share that cost with the cities. So, um, as I mentioned, there's five teams. Um, so the, uh, city's contribution is about two hundred and forty thousand dollars between all of the cities combined. Um, and we, uh, cover the rest through a variety of funding streams, including MHSA. And so the crisis-receiving center and short-term beds is really, what, like I said, the most expensive part because we just don't have it right now. So we have to get it up and running and hopefully get it sustainable over the course of these first three years. So I'm gonna, um, just tell you the difference. The crisis-receiving center, uh, the short-term beds are, are within the crisis-receiving center. So the crisis-receiving center is the drop-off kind of location. And within that, we will have what we call, um, short-term chairs. Uh, our crisis-receiving chairs and short-term beds. So the crisis-receiving chairs are specifically for folks who need less than twenty-four hours to stabilize. A lot of times those are gonna be our folks who have some kind of substance-induced, uh, crisis. But they might also be someone in mental health crisis who literally just needs uh, an overnight to kind of get themselves together, time away from family members. Sometimes we'll do that. Um, so the, the short-term beds are within the crisis, uh, receiving center, and those are for folks who need maybe two to four days stabilized. Remember I talked about the folks that we send to inpatient that are often released within that four-day period? And so that's really the target population for these short-term, um, beds. And I always get my numbers mixed up. I wanna look at, make sure I give you the right numbers. So for the short-term, um, beds, we think we need sixteen of those at any point in time, and then we'd have ten of the crisis-receiving chairs at any point in time. Um, most of this, um, funding, it goes directly to staffing. So as I mentioned, we have, we'll have psychiatrists on site, we'll have, um, twenty-four-seven staffing nurses. Um, you know, medical-level staff in addition to other kind of mental health clinicians and, uh, the like. Um, so the great news is that the governor has, uh, really prioritized behavioral health funding, and so we are applying, a- a- as I speak to you, uh, for more than one grand opportunity that may help us with this. But we are asking each of our cities to, um, partner with us on this, uh, initial three-year period. Um, uh, in hopes of giving us off the ground and running and finding a sustainable path. And this is kind of our timeline. Uh, we have already presented to the city of Davis and the city of Woodland. Uh, uh, West Sac was our last city to present to. We have full support from both of those councils, uh, for the shared finance, financial contributions. And our, uh, board of supervisors has agreed to allocate three million dollars in ARP funds towards this. And, um, we will be adding quite a bit of MHSA funding as well, um, in, uh, into this project. So this is our timeline. Uh, we hope to issue an RFP, uh, in the, this coming spring. Uh, and then, you know, evaluate the proposals we, we get a- and initiate a contract, and in a perfect world, have that contractor chosen by the beginning of the fiscal year and, and get this off the ground and running. Um, so that's kind of our plan. I'm happy to stop talking now and answer any questions you have. Um, and there, app, there is a, there are a couple of, um, additional resources at the end of the slideshow for your um, information if you'd like after night.
Okay. Thank you, um, Karen. And let me check among my colleagues, um, and does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Early.
I have, um, Karen, bear with me. I, I have several. Um, so first of all, you're doing God's work. I don't know if you're a religious person or not, but, um, obviously, the mental health world is near and dear to my heart, so thank you for all the work that you're doing. Um, as it relates to, to West Sacramento, I just, I think I wanna get a better handle on some of the numbers. So right now, um, and I, and I guess I should also acknowledge, um, and give credit to the initiative that we did in, in July of twenty-twenty that started, um, our co-responders here in West Sacramento, which came out of my brother's keeper initiative, um, the task force, right? So that was a recommendation that came out of that, and then the council at the time adopted that. Um, and I think I've worked with Chief Strange and our city manager to make that happen. And so I'm, I'm happy to hear that is, it is going well. I think one of the questions that I would have, probably Karen, not for you, but actually for Chief Strange, is actually data on that, right? Like I've, um, I don't think as a public community, we, we fully understand the co-responder model. Um, I think Chief Strange, to your point, not only among our sworn officers, that this is kind of a shift, but it's also a shift, I think, for some, um, community members as well, just understanding the idea that rather than having sworn officers responding to someone in mental health crisis, um, that you have someone who is trained responding with them and what that means in allocation of time. So I think, uh, not necessarily here, but it would be helpful to hear actual results, right, and outcomes of how we, West Sacramento, has benefited from that, um, that, uh, paradigm shift, right? Especially if we're talking about continuing to invest in Double Down. Um, so that's just sort of a side note, and Karen, let's view. So we, we currently have two co-responders, um, coming out of our, our police department that, that we split, both with the county, and then we have our own funding stream that's going into that. And so I think in understanding the investment, the three-year investment that we have, that's being asked here for us to consider, co-responders are part of the crisis now, um, program, the whole stall, right? And so would, would we continue to invest in those co-responders and have the three-year funding commitment, or is that three-year funding commitment now also taking over for the amount that we have for the co-responder?
No, the amount we're requesting now, uh, is really above and beyond the co-responders. It's for that third component, that crisis-receiving sobering center component of the model.
Okay.
And we do it for amazing outcomes, so I'll make sure that the chief shares them. Please do. Not only with me, but the public.
And, and, and it is our intent, um, Councilmember Early, to, to make sure that we are starting to report on that data. Um, part of the reality is just getting up and running fully, including, uh, the backbone that the Health and Human Services Agency does provide. Especially, uh, because they are aggregating, collecting and aggregating that data from all of the partner agencies involved in that program. Um, I think it's also, um, important to acknowledge that, uh, when we, uh, made the move that we did to establish the Community Outreach and Cer- Cer- Sorry, Community Outreach and Services Division, and to intentionally expand actually our, our co-responder. Um, I say that because it recognizes that we had been involved in co-response since we hired Mark Sawyer. And, um, we have been doing this for some time, and, and I think it's even acknowledged, at least at this current state, that, uh, we are, we are, we are all doing this in our agencies across the county, but, but West Sacramento is a leader in the space. And, um, so it's encouraging that we have, um, other options presented to us. But Karen and I have frankly talked about how successful we feel our co-responder program is currently. Um, and I have a strong desire to maintain it even as we develop the whole crisis now model. Um, and so I think there will be a point in time where we understand that it is time to shift into an even lesser, um, lesser involved police response in many of these public matters, um, public response matters. Um, and, and I think that will become more clear to us as this, uh, progress in the, in the crisis now model evolves. Um, but frankly, I'm, I'm so, so pleased with what we're doing that, you know, there's, there's many conversations I've had about even expanding what we're doing right now in co-response because of how well it is working in our community. So I'm excited to be able to share that data at some point.
Yeah, I, I think that's the part for me as, as a data person, right, is, is not only leading with, um, with the great news and the stories, but also leading with how it's actually impacting, whether that be dollars, time. Um, I think the other piece of this is that we are sharing costs, um, caring with the county. And as far as I understand, this is part of our three-year MHSA fund, right? And so I, I'm curious around the, again, Chief Strange, to your point, that we're having the success, we're thinking about expanding this out, is there a sustainability plan? If, if it is successful, do, do you plan on putting this in your next three-year, um, plan? Or how, how does this work to ensure that we don't lose that funding if we've now built a model around it?
Yeah, I think it's, it's a great question because it's, you know, I told you about how we had co-responders before, and they went away because it wasn't sustainable. So we have a couple of things that are different this time. Uh, one, one is that we're gonna build into this model being able to build private insurance and allowing the privately insured to also be, um, dropped off, which, uh, as you know, you know, people that are privately insured also have mental health issues. Um, and, uh, we also have the federal government willing to, uh, have, give us eighty-five percent FMAP for our Medi-Cal clients, which usually we get fifty percent. So that's gonna be several million dollars a year as well that we didn't have access to before. So, um, uh, and as I mentioned, our hope really is to have our, our health systems and our other partners contribute some portion of their savings back into the sustainability, but probably at a much, uh, lower level, um, because we'll have these other funding streams that we're able to leverage. I will say we have, um, seventeen funding streams right now built into our, our model.
Grading all of them together. Yeah, and so, yes. Um, so I have two last questions. Um, not, uh, not one that we have to answer now, but I am curious about the overlap between the three-year because we started this program, the Chief Strange point. Um, I think it came, I think we implemented in twenty-twenty, and so maybe started in twenty-twenty-one. Chief Strange, you'd have to correct me on that when we got the funding. I just wanna make sure that, um, that we can continue our co-responders, so maybe getting in your next three-year plan, um, for MHSA funds as well as funding this. So, so just wanting to be aware of the overlap there. My last questions are on, um, where the facility would be located. Don't, don't answer that quite yet. Um, as well as Chief Strange, for you, or Karen, just following up with the actual numbers for West Sacramento. So you gave me a few inpatient beds needed, um, for Yolo County, um, the short-term beds needed, and the crisis-receiving chairs needed for Yolo County overall. I would be curious of those originating in West Sacramento, what our count is, just trying to get an idea of the impact there. And then lastly, um, regarding the, the contribution from other cities, are, are all of us paying the same amount? Or is there some sort of pro-rated amount depending on how big we are, what our need is? So just asking three questions.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna remember the last one. I don't know if I'm gonna remember the first one, but the last one is, no, you're not all paying the same amount. We're asking for the city of West Sacramento, we're asking for two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars a year for three years. Uh, or eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-one thousand over the course of three years, which is less than the other two cities, if that makes you feel better, because we base it off of, yeah, we base it off of population. And, uh, we asked Davis for one point one m- million plus some change, and Woodland for nine hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Okay. And the last question was where the facility might be located, right? So you talked about the fact that our officers are having to drive to Davis, maybe even sometimes Woodland. Um, would this facility be in West Sacramento, or how would that? How would we ensure that they're not, our officers aren't having to do the same thing that they're already doing?
Well, as you can imagine, citing a facility like this really ruffles feathers for neighborhoods. So, um, in Karen Larson's perfect world, which has not been approved by my board of supervisors, I will say that this would probably happen at the juvenile detention facility. Uh, our board has, um, made the decision to um, contract with another county to transfer our youth who are, who currently reside in our juvenile detention facility. I think we have like six in a ninety-bed facility. And so my vision would be to, to use that entire facility for rehabilitation kind of recovery ser- re-entry services. And, and because our law enforcement partners are already used to dropping off on that campus, um, we feel like, you know, there's, it, it's literally already kind of set up for it. It is in Woodland, um, but.
We gotta go over causeway again?
Well, the, the good thing for West Sac is you can go on River Road, you know, uh, and kind of avoid it, and I, I mean, the causeway between Davis is much worse than the one between Woodland. But yeah, it's not in West Sac probably. I probably couldn't get Woodland or Davis to contribute if I put it in West Sac.
Okay. Thank you for answering those questions, Karen.
Councilmember Alcala?
Thank you. Um, I do have some questions about, um, the fifty percent of individuals who are, and I believe you said it was drug-related, is that correct?
Uh, no, I, I think the slide you're talking about, sorry, don't watch because you might get dizzy. Uh, I'm aware, was it? Was it at the beginning? Uh, I think I had fifty percent of the folks that come into our emergency department. Is that the one?
Yes, correct.
This one. Uh, no, fifty percent of the folks that come into the emergency department on fifty-one fifty holds are released without going to inpatient psychiatric hospitalization. And then of the fifty percent that go to psychiatric inpatient, um, another fifty percent are out within three to four days.
Okay, all right. It wasn't necessarily drug-related. It could be something else, right? Sort of.
Right, but we are envisioning this facility as being able to take folks that are under the influence. I think that's actually one of the most attractive pieces to the law enforcement partners because oftentimes they have somebody who's drunk and disorderly, and they, they have to take them into custody because of their naughty behaviors. But if they had a place like this, they could take them there and they could clean up, and hopefully we could get them some help when they sober up.
Yeah, I, I remember once seeing a long time ago, um, some, um, innovative measures that were being taken in France and Switzerland. They used to call these places, um, is it harm reduction centers? I think that's what they call. I mean, they were very comprehensive, you know, people could do there, they, it was needle exchange, they would meet with social workers and all. And is that something along the lines of what we're trying to do, this, this process?
I, I think it's definitely harm reduction in nature, right? A- a- and it's, it's treating people with substance use disorders as though they have a condition that needs to be treated rather than taking them into a custody setting where they're probably not gonna get better. They, they may very well have committed a crime that could land them in jail, but, but I think the greater good would be getting them to a facility where they can hopefully get help and, and potentially get better.
Yeah, and I, and I was interested when you also mentioned about private insurances, which is gonna keep our costs down. Do we ever refer anything out to something like, um, what are those methadone clinics called? Al-Anon? Is, do, do those still exist? Do we ever refer people out that way?
Twelve-step meetings, yeah.
Okay, all right. Twelve steps, it's new. Okay, very good. And I, you know, I love the fact that, um, Chief Strange and City of West Sacramento And I, you know, I love the fact that um Chief Strange and City of West Sacramento does have um coresponders. My brother, Robert Dillerell, is one, but he works out in Woodland. And I think that's one of the reasons that, um, you know, we don't have such negative interactions that other cities have. Because our officers are being trained, you know, to assess situations, call in the personnel, mental health personnel, rather than just simply react. So, okay, thank you for answering that question. The only one I really had. Thank you.
And and I think our trajectory in this space is very intentional now, where I think we left a lot of things to hope and chance. And and now it's very different and that's that evolution's, um, you know, been in place for most of the last ten years and we're and we're getting better and better at it. Uh, the other thing I did want to bring up, I think it's important as we talk about um our our police officers transporting to Davis right now and other places. And it's something I I recognize now, as as Karen and I talked about this presentation, I failed to raise to her. But I know that through another means, um, Health and Human Services through YEMZA is working on trying to overcome our need to actually be involved in transporting especially docile um folks to treatment centers or to the hospital, even if it is a fifty-one fifty. So I just wanted to prime that for Karen, so she could talk about other ways that that we're trying to avoid having police officers involved in that transportation.
Yeah, and I think even now we can have our coresponders transport. If a person's not on a hold, then there's another safe location for them to get to. So we can definitely look at that um for the new facility. And I think that you're referring to the alternative destination legislation where by uh ambulances uh can drop off at at places other than hospitals. So we've already started working on our application for that. Um, which would allow us to potentially have these individuals transported via ambulance instead of a police car. And the ambulance could drop them off at the sobering receiving center and still get paid for that transport in a way that, you know, ma- made sense for them financially.
Okay. All right. If there are no other questions for councilmembers, I have a few questions. First of all, I'd like to go back to the slide that had the SB eighty-two and the history of West Sacramento that you presented to us. Um, I don't know why it looks humongous. Oh, I'm have to narrow it in. Okay. Um, so I I will say, um, Karen, historically, um, Yolo County has been um advanced in providing the the training, the crisis intervention training. Um, you know, Mike Summers, um, you know, helped, you know, shepherd that process here in Yolo County. He's a resident here of West Sacramento. Um, and um seeing that, you know, that was something that, uh, you know, June Forbes, um, remember June? Um, she was on the local mental health board and I just don't, I just want to, you know, you know, acknowledge her her legacy here in Yolo County, along with um the co-responder staff. That was another one of her her visions. She's um, she had a child who was um, who, you know, has been in the hospital. And uh she also worked closely with a a strong NAMI group, National Association of Mental Illness Group here in in Yolo County, who um are fierce advocates and um also, you know, helping out with um pine tree gardens and um other forms of um housing, you know, who can provide stability and support for those with severe mental illness. Um, and and I and I've been really fortunate um to be able to work with them on the mental health board. Um, and also don't want to, don't want to leave out Helen Thompson. Helen Thompson, who established, um, and and I I think it's a, I think it's a component in here um that I I'd like to add, is the mental health court. Um, you know, Helen um being an assembly member and also um implementing Laura's Law uh through her experience as an assembly member. So we we have Laura's Law here in Yolo County, which is another treatment model, which helps those that do get involved in the justice system. So these were all programs um that I think are in our arsenal um to deliver compassionate care and support for those um in our community. So when SB eighty-two came around, it was around the same time the city was um seeking to look at house, you know, homelessness solutions. And uh, you know, it was, it was a good opportunity to share what I what I learned um was funding opportunities. And then um we had a mental health board expert, grant writer, Robert Canning, who um pitched in, rolled up his sleeves and helped the county put together a a grant. And Robert is still fortunately um involved. Um, we're in touch. And so he's he's another resource and expert here. Um, so Karen, when we got the urgent care here in West Sacramento, and I'm just trying to um figure out the connection between the urgent care and Crisis Now, it's not the same model, but it is, it was kind of like a a drop-in center for our police and fire. Um, and I know that we needed to transition out of that urgent care and utilize the building for another reason. Um, but I just want to be able to see and make sure that, you know, some of the other challenges I see um around in our region is um being able to hire the professionals to be able to deliver the services. And just, you know, it was, I know, I know we have a ways out before we we get to that point. Um, but I just want to make sure that we have, uh, you know, the staffing support is down the road. And I'm I'm um look to you to see if, you know, we are going to, because I know that there are certain locations. My my little grandson is going to be struggling to find a therapist. Um, because uh, you know, the the current location where all the therapists were, I mean, there are none right now. And so we're going to have to try to figure that out. They they um all transition and it's it's not the highest, being a social worker is not the highest pain job. Um, so they tend to, um, you know, go around from place to place as far as, you know, finding a good therapist. Um, so that's one thing is just, um, you know, the staffing um support for that. Um, the other is, uh, we, I think we we have a shortage of boarding care homes here in Yolo County. And I know that could be a good resource for people um who need that additional support. Um, looking at our project, uh, room key and sometimes um home key, um clientele. Uh, sometimes I think that um there that that like a boarding care and maybe there's probably interventions that I think um Crisis Now can provide, but I I'm gonna look to the two of you both, you know, Chief Strange and Karen, to see if that's a possibility um here. And, you know, when we're looking at transporting clients, I was also wondering um about our crisis intervention teams, whether they would be able to provide that support. Um, you know, and I'm not sure of their availability. I do know that when SB eighty-two came around, I think everybody worked really hard to try to step up um during the time that we most, you know, we we heard, we had the most calls. Um, and now we have two, which is great. Um, so that gives a a little more um time to be able to provide that support. Um, and the other um question I have, um, Karen, your your expertise would be really helpful here, is AB fifteen forty-two, which um uh was vetoed by the governor. And our small business community is um really struggling with those that um are experiencing uh break-ins um and challenges in their businesses, you know, um from those who have a substance abuse um issue. Um, so AB fifteen forty-two was a solution. I I I took a supporting concept position um on on my own. Um, but, you know, I want to see whether Crisis Now or what other programs we can take a look at here to bridge, you know, like if we make this investment, could we go back to the small business community and say, hey, look at, this is, this is what we're doing? Um, to try to provide that additional support. So, um, and with, and, you know, um, another question I have, I know you thought about, um, you know, looking at um some of the funding that the governor has put out in the last budget, but you know, is the future eleven fifteen waiver um uh idea with this Crisis Now model possible? Because I know that um eleven fifteen waiver will eventually include, you know, a broader behavioral health, like IMDs or something like that. Um, just listening to Dr. Sharon, looking to um be proactive in that effort. Um, but just thinking ahead, if we can incorporate what we find here um in a future eleven fifteen waiver idea, and those are my questions.
Oh, my goodness, that was a lot of questions on a lot of different subject matters. So I'm gonna try my best to to track back. So, uh, first of all, workforce is a huge issue. It's great that the governor's investing all this money and we have all this money to invest in behavioral health, but you're absolutely right. I I'm, I just have to cross my fingers that people, that we're going to be able to find the staff for this, because workforce is a huge issue. Uh, we all know that we're worried about losing our staff and and in this behavioral health space, finding folks that are willing to work twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week in a setting like this is already complicated, let alone, you know, the other on top of it. So we um are investing some of our MHSA funds in a workforce component. We don't know exactly what that's going to look like yet, but hopefully it'll help to incentivize some of these things. And the second question you asked goes around board and cares. We also are uh planning to dedicate at least two million dollars of the MHSA towards board and care, getting additional board and care beds and and the operations for those. Um, so hopefully that will be a nice uh ancillary service to the Crisis Now Receiving Center, a a a place where we can get people in and hopefully help them, you know, be stabilized on a more long-term basis. And fifteen forty-two, our local kind of answer to fifteen forty-two, sure, this is a part of it, because the more we get folks off the street, especially people that are in, having substance-induced crises, that the better that is for, you know, our local businesses and and the like. But also at um the last Community Corrections Partnership, um, uh, when we did our budget, we um redid our budget methodology and allocated a full twenty-five percent of our AB one oh nine dollars to treatment. And a significant portion of that is going to in custody uh treatment for people struggling with substance use disorders. So, so the great news is, it's very, that is a similar to what fifteen forty-two is recommending in that it's a locked setting. They're just people that we already have in custody um and are there because of substance uh related crimes. And we're gonna offer them treatment while they're there. And and I think I probably missed another five questions, so feel free to ask again if I need.
Eleven fifteen waiver.
Oh, uh, yeah, I think, you know, I I think something might happen uh uh outside of the eleven fifteen waiver. I think this crisis continuum space has a lot of um synergy statewide. Um, so I think the eleven fifteen and eleven fifteen waiver may very well be the answer, but it might even be something before before that, uh, you know, from our state legislature. I don't know.
Okay. Um, and and I just want to, you know, acknowledge, you know, your your creativity with the braiding of the funding, Karen. Um, I I always admire, you know, how you were able to sustain, you know, preserving SB eighty-two countywide by by IGT funds and 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 governmental transfers, um, being able to preserve it and um continue it until we got, you know, um, you know, the two positions. And just the fourth thought, I think this is continues to be, as Chief Strange um referenced, all the, all the um city police departments um embraced um having the crisis intervention teams. And we're at a loss when we were trying to figure out when that money dried up and we're told by the state, hey, you're out of money. Um, and then we had to try to figure out how to how to survive. Um, and then when the Mental Health Services Act funding was rolling out again, um, and that, you know, dialogue was happening um during the course of of that time. And I'm grateful that you're funding it now. So thank you so much um for continuing to do that. Chief Strange, I don't know if you had any thoughts about anything that that um was said.
Uh, no additional, uh, other than just to bring us back home to um the request for for support and concept at this point. And I know that uh our talented staff, our finance uh division and our city manager's office will will help us work to find ways to to come up with the funding, um, both city funds and maybe some other funds that that may be advantage to the city over the course of the near future. So with that, I just bring us back to that that item.
Well, I'm I'm very supportive of this, so um I don't, I don't know what my fellow councilmembers, we we are, we're, we're down to three. Supportive.
Uh, yes.
Yes, ma'am, I just want to chime in. It, I I think just from my observing this discussion, uh, definitely, um, and also through conversations and in in background with councilmembers, um, I I know there's a a keen interest in this topic and uh really um a a lot of good, um, uh, you know, complimentary work for what we're already doing in the police department. So this is something we'll need to figure out, we'll work with the county and the other partners on um the the plan for funding and some of the other logistical issues. And it will be back to a future council meeting once we're ready to uh move ahead. So thank you.
All right, thank you. And I and I encourage um you, Chief Strange and um Karen, to meet with our um West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce, um, because they they have been meeting on discussing these particular issues um and the impact that it has to businesses. There there are a very caring um community, but I I think they do, they do want to look at solutions. So just encourage um connecting with, and I'll, I'll be more than happy to make a connection for you if you need it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Karen. Good to see you. It's always great seeing you.
Yeah, you too.
Thank you. Take care. Uh, next is our uh regular agenda item number nineteen, under Police, Consideration and Award of Professional Service Contracts to Advance Police Public Trust and Transparency in Consideration of Resolution twenty-one dash one oh three, approving related budget appropriations. Chief Strange, it's all yours.
Thank you. Uh, as we approach the eleven o'clock hour, I am going to shift my original plan. And I'm going to not be making a uh slide presentation, so uh bear with me. I am going to try to do my best to um address this with the right amount of attention it certainly needs. Um, but thank you first and foremost, because um this is not the first time um any of you have heard about the concepts that I'm speaking of and that are proposed that are captured in the report tonight. Um, but just for a quick, uh, very brief history lesson. So um for several years now, uh, our city and our, their city council has um presented very um firm priorities, policy and management priorities uh that involve the police department uh and its advancement and evolution, especially in light of real social concerns, righteous concerns about the profession of policing and the desire for it to be done in a very intentional way here in the city. So um tracking back to twenty fifteen uh with the President's uh Task Force on Policing and the outcomes of that, the Twenty-First Century Policing um document. Um, there are six pillars that are referenced in that document that really still serve well as a guide for our development as we evolve into the future. And those six pillars are building trust and legitimacy, policy and oversight, technology and social media, community policing and crime reduction, training and education and officer safety and wellness. And I am proud to say that we have been engaged in advancing along all of those fronts really since that time, uh, since twenty fifteen, doing so very intentionally, uh, with some of the expectations laid by uh by by uh council, laid forth by council, rather. But also because we know that it's our duty, especially in in roles like mine as leadership in the professional policing, that that we have to continue to advance uh what it is that we do and how we do our job. Um, the reality is, is, is unfortunately, there's probably too many places around the nation that have just waited for a crisis and then they change. Uh, it is definitely my desire that we are on the front end of change and rather than being uh evolved by force, I want us to be in the driver's seat of this. I want to be informed. I want to be able to make good, smart, informed decisions. But I want us all collectively to be able to do that. And to do that, I think what we have to recognize is that uh my profession historically, with the best of intent, made decisions by relying on other professionals and not fully including our community in most cases. And so some of what we need to do now and what's outlined in um tonight's proposal, uh, recommendation and for your consideration and approval, are um different measures that help not only increase the transparency of police-related information and especially data, but also increase the platforms and availability for our community members to provide us very important input, not only about that data, but about other things that really are specifically concerning trust in the police and our community members' sense of safety in our community, two really key components about uh the efficacy of our efforts. Additionally, and um looking at some of the strategic guidance and and the the emphasis from councilmembers, uh, just to outline these things, in twenty sixteen, one of the strategic plan goals was related to these six pillars of Twenty-First Century Policing. In twenty nineteen, another strategic plan goal was related to uh police department risk management. And it included a desire to increase some sort of audit or oversight function of what we do and how we actually look. and how we actually look at ourselves, investigate ourselves. Twenty twenty, uh, it was referenced in the last item, but one of the goals was to, uh, advance policing reforms. And that was actually titled through the N B K Alliance. And so we saw some of the outcomes of that and the actions taken behind that. And then as recent as twenty twenty-one, um, the strategic plan goal that really encompassed a lot of the things that I've brought forward tonight is related to policing advancement. And so, uh, really where we are at today is, again, I've said it multiple times tonight, but using these methods, using greater data transparency, increasing platforms and opportunities for community input very intentionally, offering additional audit functions that look at how we investigate ourselves and make sure that we are doing that in the best, most contemporary ways and in ways that actually honor the public need for information. And then finally, really looking at ourselves comprehensively with the help of a, of a consultant to really understand the paradigm shift that we need to make, which is thinking through the lens of what the police department does today and asking questions if we're thinking task by task, should the police department be involved in that thing, that community service? If so, does it need to be a police officer that does it? Or is it more optimal to use a different classification of employee to get that done? So by doing that comprehensive assessment of our organization, it should allow us to be able to then bring forth a pragmatic, practical, realistic, achievable plan for how we grow and where we grow in a way that focuses on strategic, thoughtful, inclusively informed optimization of our services, so we can serve the city in a way it absolutely deserves to be served. And this is also part really of a culture of continuous improvement that we are engaged in that relies upon not only our industry best practices, things that we employ right now, whether that be accreditation, the use of the Lexipol policy platform, how we inform not only you as council through quarterly reports, the community in that same way and through annual reports, through social media, but in a way that really puts really focused and, and foremost in our mind, ways that we can invest in continually improving. Because I think we're a good department. I think we are. I want us to be a great department. But I can't just rely on my own instinct and, and what I see every day to form that opinion. I need the input from our community. I need experts to help us with that to really be able to sit before all of you in the community and be able to assert that statement with absolute confidence and data back me up. So with that, I think the, um, the proposals that, that are in here for the four different contracts, I think, I hope that they are well explained. Um, I can, I can go through each of those briefly. So I think the important aspects to the data transparency portal and our recommendation to go with Measures for Justice is, um, really based in what we've seen in their product, but also that they are a third party that will actually work to validate our information. So it's not one of those situations where they're just putting, pushing out data that the police department has supplied them. They actually criticize that data. They, they make sure that it actually makes sense and that it is good data to share. The reality is, is we don't have a good history in our profession and certainly not here of having great data. Uh, we're going through a records management system upgrade right now that thankfully this council has supported. And that will help and, and this platform and this order will also help. The Zen City tool for the, the block Y is always on, um, surveying is a really important complement to the Zen City services that we already get that, that is sent to public sentiment surveying. But this is really more specific and asks very specific questions about policing and trust and safety in the community. And so it really is going to give us an advantage of baselining that and then really understanding how different things that happen in the community or really across the nation, if you think about things that have influenced this profession. Think about how we're perceived in a, in a neighborhood by neighborhood at some point basis with a really solid demographic spread that we can trust the data based on that. And again, I've talked about the, the comprehensive organizational assessment, where that can take us, how that can inform us. And, uh, and then the, uh, professional oversight, uh, of how we conduct our internal work through the O I R group, who is the really the prominent group out there doing this work. I think those are, those are all in synopsis and very quick synopsis why we, we went with those vendors in this recommendation. So with that, I'm going to close and, and abbreviate the, the presentation. That probably would have been much longer.
Thank you, Chief Strange. Councilmember Alcala.
Yes, Chief, first I want to say thank you so much. Everything that you do is transparent, and I think that's what is transforming our community into trusting again, you know, trusting our police officers. So thank you very much. Um, I had a few, um, questions. Um, some of this data that we're going to be getting, I know at one point the community felt that, uh, in cases, I'm not saying necessarily here, community at large, they had problems with cases of use of excessive force by police officers or, you know, incidences where more, let's say, communities were targeted like Latinos or African Americans, they were maybe stopped more by, by police officers. That, is that the type of data that we're going to be looking at?
Yeah, I think when, when you talk about especially the, the last circumstance, we do know and even the data that we have been sharing so far that, that there is disproportionate minority contact in our community by our police. Um, what we don't really know and we don't have enough data to really look through to really get to any real analysis or, or, or meaningful discussion is what are the, what are the correlative factors associated with that? And that's where both the data transparency portal, um, but, but even some of the other work that, that hopefully O I R will help us with and some of the audit function will help us make sure that we are getting on point with mixture that, that we're looking at the correct data that, that really influences that, but that we're asking the right questions about that data. I think, uh, the Measures for Justice work is really going to be substantial in, in advancing, um, how we ask the questions that we ask. But what it also does is by using data to discuss something like police use of force, which is can be very, very emotionally charged. What it does is it gives us a starting point that really through data is dispassionate. And so I think it avails an opportunity to have a starting point, um, that is validated by this third party that really is a social justice institution, Measure for Justice, um, in a different way than we've been able to before where it's just police data shared by the police department. Uh, and so the fact that this is hosted and validated by a third party, I think will help advance those discussions. And yes, this is exactly the type of discussions that we're hoping it promotes.
Okay, thank you. Just a real quick question. This information, this data, is it going to be available to the public, um, on a, on a site? Is it going to be shared just with, um, internal or is it? How is this going to be disseminated? I mean, where's the information going to?
Good question. I'm glad you asked it. So the Measures for Justice Data Transparency Portal will be just that. It is public. It is, uh, there and the goal is that it's updated on a very frequent basis. It may not be real time, but I, I think the hope is that it won't be more than, you know, a week or probably a month old from, you know, thinking about the validation process that needs to occur with the data. Uh, but that is intended to be out there regularly and, and it will be promoted, um, and we're put together by Measures for Justice. So we don't, we don't get the, the final say. We don't get to have any opportunity to manipulate that dashboard. Um, that dashboard also has the ability, will have the ability for, um, community inquiries based on a, a, a data set that, that the consumer, that the end user can actually manipulate. So the user experience part of that and making sure it's not complex but simple, that can be driven by most anyone is an important feature there, um, because it'll help inform really good questions. So yeah, that will be hosted. That will be public and, and really even the other tools. So my hope is that the, um, the block Y is always on surveying likewise. Once we understand the use of that, my hope is that that is also shared. That's been, uh, its application across different agencies in the nation has been different. Some, um, use it to guide internally, um, but there's other organizations that are using that and publishing it, hopefully publishing it for the public to consume as well to understand how those survey results are coming back. Um, the O I R reporting and then that analysis, it will, the process will be that it is shared with us internally first, but it too will be shared publicly, uh, once all the recommendations are finalized and it gives us sort of a plan of action moving forward. So that is, uh, again, one of those things that when, when the reports emerge about their assessment of us. The real key to this is that it does get shared publicly because that creates accountability for me to follow up on the recommendations and to have responses. And, and by doing that, what it does, frankly, it requires us to be humble right now. It requires us, um, to be vulnerable because we want to improve. We want to improve. We can't be looking in the mirror and saying, man, I'm great today. No, we have to be asking people that are professionals in this work, how are we doing really? And how can we get better? And so, yeah, and, and every case, um, these things will be, be made public.
Thank you, Chief.
Councilmember Early.
Hi, Strange. I'm, um, I'm really excited. Obviously anytime I see data, I'm like, yes. I'm also appreciative that you, that you, that you referenced N B K, which obviously was a lot of effort. You know, and you, you mentioned that, um, you know, we in West Sacramento have not necessarily had a crisis, but you know, quite frankly, the work that came out of My Brother's Keeper and the recommendations, right, that the city council ended up adopting at that time in twenty twenty, which I think was sort of like the foundation for our current, um, community responding unit was in response to everything that had happened with George Floyd, right? And so although it wasn't a crisis within West Sacramento, it was a national, um, crisis that we were all experiencing. And so I, I appreciate West Sacramento's willingness, um, to, to be, um, not reactive, um, right? But proactive about, about this effort in community policing. Um, in thinking about the, the work that we're proposing here and, and sort of picking back and actually off of Councilmember Alcalis's questions, um, although we have this third-party contractor that's doing all the work, um, your team, meaning, um, the, the police department is managing a contract, right? And so the, the outcomes, the drafts, everything will be going to, obviously to you first, right?
Yeah, at this point, as far as the, the iteration we're, we're moving forward into right now, that is the recommendation. Certainly as we start seeing, you know, the value, um, hopefully that, that is resulting from the, the work that we're proposing here. You know, obviously the questions about, okay, well, we did this and that was a good practice. Is this the best practice? Uh, I think that analysis and those questions will certainly need to be asked to, to see if there are different, different, um, changes that we want to make that, that we think are enhancements to how we do this.
Well, and I, and I guess for me, I would, I would say a few things to that. I mean, I think one, this is, this is absolutely a huge step in the right, in the right direction, right? And trying to, I think, achieve, um, what you referenced, which is, um, increasing public trust. But I think part of that increasing public trust is the transparency and, and even the appearance, right, of transparency, which is if it's going and being filtered through the police department first before it gets to the community, then there still is that potential, right? Even though I trust you, right, because I know you, we have a relationship. And so I think part of that and increasing, um, public trust and not necessarily something that we would have to do now is keeping that in mind, that if, if it truly is transparency and there is, um, in your mind even, right? Or the, the society's mind, a trust issue with our police department, then that's something that we should consider that not all of this should be filtered through the police department, then out to the community if it's supposed to be increasing community trust of the police department. So that's, that for me is point one. And then point, point two, more quite frankly for our, our council members is out of the work that we did, and I was a part of that work in twenty twenty around My Brother's Keeper. This was a part of it, but another part was, was how we train, how we recruit, how we increase diversity within our police department and other, you know, even the requirement for being a police officer, right? And, and how are we doing that in West Sacramento? And so again, adding to our agenda in February, My Brother's Keeper initiative is part of our priority and is part of our agenda still as a city council. And so I would ask that this be a part of it, but then we add to it because this is just a small piece of the work that we had started in twenty twenty and unfortunately has, has not continued in the same way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ledesma, do you have any comments before we open it up to public?
I could wait for, uh, public comment and then come back because I do have some comments.
Sure. Okay, thanks. And, and, um, I'm going to open it up for public comment. I'm also going to open up, um, public comment, um, for item eighteen. Um, I didn't open it up back when we were discussing the item, but I'm going to do it after we take the vote of item nineteen. Um, so we keep it separate. Um, so I will open it up for public comment for this item. Are there any requests to speak, Madam Clerk?
Hey, oh, wait a minute. Somebody just came on. Um, Maria Brahala, hang on. I just asked her to unmute. Now her hand is down. I'm not sure if she went ahead and took her hand down after I asked her to unmute. She's unmuted.
You're unmuted. You can speak now.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm so grateful that you're speaking about, um, uh, criminal justice, uh, Chief Strange and for your presentation. For me, it's, uh, criminal justice is so personal because I think, uh, if you haven't by now, because I sound like a broken record to so many people, uh, our county D A, based on an F P P C, uh, complaint, uh, had me arrested and, uh, for political sm- uh, purposes. And I'm there for a thousand times until he is arrested himself. Uh, I'm sure the FBI and the Department of Justice will make sure that that happens. But anyway, uh, so in your presentation, you didn't say one time, uh, justice reform. You didn't say one time, January fifth, I mean, six, you didn't say one time, uh, uh, George Floyd. Uh, you didn't say one time, uh, justice, uh, racial disparity. And, uh, and so, uh, I'm sorry that, uh, you said, uh, B M K. It's actually Black Lives Matter and, uh, there's a reason that, uh, the protesters say, uh, name or, or say her name because we don't want to, uh, reduce it down to an acronym or, or to an initial, uh, B M K. It's Black Lives Matter very, very much and mine. And so anyway, you're so correct. This is a tremendous paradigm shift. And you're our leader in that shift. So I am so grateful to you. And so there's a whole bunch of words that got skipped. And, and so in the next presentation, uh, racial disparity, uh, the, and, and, and R B, our Black Lives Matter incident was Rob Coleman. And so I'm going to say his name. I've got twenty, uh, I've got another thirty, more than thirty seconds. I'm going to say his name over and over because he's dead. And, uh, and so like, uh, we said this is a small piece and so we have a long ways to go. Uh, thirty seconds. And so, uh, I assume in January, in June, we're going to be having a new district attorney. And I assume you're going to support the candidate that's going to bring justice reform to our city. And so anyway, I'm going to say his name, Rob Coleman, Rob Coleman, Rob Coleman, Rob Coleman. Rob Coleman is dead. Rob Coleman, Rob Coleman, Robert. Thank you.
Our Madam Mayor, I don't see any other speakers.
Okay, thank you. Okay, bring it back to council. Um, Councilmember Ledesma.
Thank you. And I, um, first of all, thank you. I apologize for my absence. I thought you guys might be done by now to be honest, but, um, I just had to take care of some personal business. I apologize. Appreciate your patience. I'm glad, glad I was able to get on and get on this, um, uh, on this subject because, uh, this is something that we've been working towards. And Rob was a beginning point for us on this for some time. Um, we started basic reporting five, six years ago, I think it was, Rob, when he first came to the department. And, um, certainly started opening our eyes to sort of what, what data we could get. And um certainly started opening our eyes to sort of what, what data we could get and where we could go from um discussions we would have. And I think where you're proposing in, in this report and kind of your, this assessment you want to do and through the other tools you're proposing, I think is, is, is the next step, right? And, and I appreciate your leadership in this area. Um, sorry. Uh, so it, it is an important subject. It always, I would say it always has been. It hasn't been enough. And I think we're learning and learning and learning and learning how to um, how, how, how to work in this space? How to, how do we policymakers operate in this space? And Councilmember West is right uh around uh, you know, data that's came here, right? And we just haven't had enough of it. We're still learning, getting the tools in place to get it, and this is part of that. And, and I'm, I'm supportive of where we're going and I, and, and actually, um Dante, I'm sorry, Councilmember Early West has has been right about how do we press on in a way that um that, that we can get real data, learn to get it. And, and I think the next step too is a little bit in terms of us as a councilor, how, how do we? I'm glad it be shared because we have learned how to talk about it and how do we, you know, work from it? I mean, it's got to be more than, um, and I don't know if you ever thought about, Strange, around. It's got to be more than you walking in and the consent item report that it, it has been. And we get on there and we see the great outreach you've done and the report out on some of the statistics. Um, this, this is supposed to be telling us two things, well, it's supposed to be doing two things, all the things you described about how, you know, how does this make you better? How does this make you, you know, the bigger police force better? Do we get the right resources? Or do we have them deployed in the right areas? We have the right needs. Have we, you seen? And are we covering, or we'll get that in a second, are we covering our blind spot where we're not? You don't have that trust. But, but it's also here for us to help us uncover possibly other policy issues that might prevent it, right? So um, I think that's the discussion we really haven't dug into yet, right? And, and I think we're, we're kind of getting there because we're talking about um, you know, the, the previous item, which I missed a little bit around, um, sort of the mental health aspect. We've started to incorporate that and I think it's starting, well, I know I talked to you earlier today and I've talked to you before and you, you, I think you kind of reiterated it is that we moved earlier in the, in the meeting, which you're learning that it actually, you know, some of these changes you've made have actually helped your current officers take a load off. And I think that is, you know, uh, to me, it's sort of like we've got this big ship and, you know, what we're, we're putting some sails up to see what catches the wind and I'm seeing that, that's sort of catching the right wind and starting to point us in the right direction. I, I, I just want to touch on a couple of things and, you know, the, 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 I do have some technical questions. So uh, uh, all of that is to be said is, Rob, I love the direction. Right? I do. And I, and I think part of the outcome is for all of us is how do we turn this? We did have an incident here last summer, which uh last, the summer twenty twenty. And um, I can't remember a time, you know, I lost more sleep as a council member than I did that week. And you're there with us, but we were there with you. And we were one city that week trying to figure out how to, how I come out of that night. But um, uh, Councilmember Early West, who, you know, the work she did was helped us kind of get through some of that and informed us at, at least enough about how we conduct ourselves in this incident. But now that we're past a year and a half past that and we've um, you know, we're coming up to this data, it is, it is about how did we engage in this issue? So it does lead to some, some more possible policy changes. So I'm more interested in maybe, you know, sort of any thoughts you have in terms of how you might direct this and that, in that discussion. I do have some, I, I, I hold that thought for a second because I do, the, the comment on, on the tools, right? Um, um, and I know Zen City is one, in there, and you're going to use their um, um, always, is it always on? I'm sorry, I lost the, 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 I'm trying to get back to the-
Yeah, blockwise.
Yeah. Um, i- i- is that something, and maybe Aaron knows this, is the way we've used Zen City, is this a different contract than what we've been currently seeing out of Zen City? And is it, or we're going, we're going to be able to, because part of this is, is city staff has benefited and, and sorry, council has benefited from Zen City. I'm, I'm having a, a, that sort of survey of social media and, and public sentiment. Is that a separate contract?
Yeah, this, this is a separate con- contract and it's a separate part of their service package. Um, so it's, it should not only be complimentary to the existing Zen City um work that we are, the products rather that we have available within the city already. Uh, but it's also a compliment and this reflects conversations I've had uh with others uh in the meeting tonight about the work that you all do in canvassing and the type of information you gather through those conversations, which is incredibly valuable. This again is just another compliment to that because the reality is, is I think in this day and age, um, this tool reaches a lot of people over digital platforms. But, but the reality is, is there's still folks that don't have access. And so it does create an access point for many, but not all. And so it is really just part of a network of-
Right, and I think that is- Right, and that gets to, I know we talked earlier, um, full, full disclosure about the assessment part and how we deploy that. Because uh, uh, I think Councilmember Early West was, was right about if it, if it's not, the engagement with the public isn't right. And even through me, who, who has a lens eleven plus years now, working with police and whatever else. It, how do we, how do we engage? As you're assessing the needs of the public and the needs of the police department, where it needs to go. You know, that, that's going to be my touch point is how are we ensuring we're, we're, we're talking to people or we're engaging? Getting data from different sources that tell us that might be a contrary to a, to a, a, a firm belief we have about how we provide the service of policing, right? And I, I, I don't know what that is, and you know, but, and, and, and it goes beyond just, you know, um, you know, I, I, individual sentiments about what policing should be. It's more so about assessing, getting the right data that forms the basis for policy decisions that like how, how you might step you like mental health. We, we kind of inherently knew there's a mental health aspect to policing and there's no data to really back it up. But, but that, that, that has played right, but how do we make those inform? How do we make sure we're engaged in the community going forward? And does this firm have a background in sort of being able to help us find those blinds? Sorry for the long-winded question.
No, I, and I think actually it's a good question that applies, I believe, across all four of these um recommendations. And in, in every case, the community component is strongly considered, maybe the exception being OIR, which really comes and just digs into our back pockets to say, what are you doing there? You know, how are you, how are you leasing yourselves? Um, so you know, that welcomed intrusion for the sake of actually improving and holding us accountable. Um, I think hopefully speaks for itself, but in every other aspect, including that comprehensive assessment. The reality is um, the contract that we, proposal that we got from City Gate, which is um who we recommend going with. With the reason we actually created a, an additional potential amount of expenditure there is primarily based on the ability to do even more than what more community outreach than they already have embedded in the process. Um, so I, I think the reality is that the public trust and transparency to happen, one, we need to leave transparency. Uh, we can't expect public trust just to be given to us, not anymore for sure. Um, and, and you know, and I think that's reflected frankly in, in um Mr. Grahala's comments. And there is uh a, a vast amount of folks that they can point to many reasons why they don't trust the police. Whether it's their personal experiences or others that they've seen play out from instances across the nation. I, I get that and it is a difficult thing to wrangle with. I wish I didn't have to deal with that. But it is our reality is that mistrust exists and it doesn't even mean someone in West Sacramento did anything wrong. But the reality is, is something happens when, when George Floyd is murdered, it reflects on cops here too. And I, whether people think that's fair or not, doesn't really matter. It's the reality. And so, you know, when it comes to uh your question about how do we take the proper next steps to make sure this, these efforts are informing policy decisions? Um, I would say I don't have a firm answer for that, but I know that we're taking the steps to, to better inform policy decisions. And really I think the key discussions and decisions made in the future are going to be about really how do we properly um include the community voice to make sure we don't miss that? Because I think it, you know, historically, our habit has been, we have information, we are making decisions. And, and I think um with the best of intent, we have not included folks in the, in the best way. And so that's really the challenge. I think it is, you've identified it's a challenge moving forward.
Yeah, and I think this is identifying that, I, I do want to go back and I, I see, um, I, I want to go to a different topic, but Councilmember Early West, I, I'm on the-
I just have one hope.
I yield the-
It might, well, it might be brief, but I, I think in all of the conversations that we're talking about, we're, we're talking about um, our community, meaning the public. But I also want to make sure that we're checking in on your team as well, right? Because the, the kind of digging in that you're talking about, um, potentially happening, I imagine can make a lot of people uncomfortable. And so I'm just wondering how your, your, your officers, your staff, your, your team feel about this?
I appreciate that question because, and you know, at points over the course of history, um, I have learned not to do sort of in line with this conversation. Implementing change like this is not something that any leader, any effective leader should do alone uh or in, in private or in secret. It needs to, if we are trying to model transparency, then I need to be transparent about these types of ideas and changes. And so I, I feel very blessed that this has been something that I have been uh very open with all of our members of our department about as we began considering these, these moves um in the last couple of years since, since I've been either the interim or the, the actual police chief. Uh, these conversations have been ongoing, um, conditioning our folks to the reality that this is the type of change that is going to occur and helping work through the uh initial discomfort about being that open about things. But the, the reality is, is when we really step back from conversations, especially about data, you know, back to the Sir Robert Peel principle about, you know, the, the police or the community, the community or the police. And if we really want to live that out, then we need to understand that our data is their data. It's not, it's not one or the other. It's, it, it belongs to all of us and it really belongs to the public. And so though we haven't had the habit of doing that or doing it well, um, that's where we need to move and that's probably um where we've needed to be for a very long time. Because the conversations that I imagine we will have five years from now, when most of this is just normed for us, our conversations, we will have wished we had ten, fifteen years ago and where it will take us. I, I am very, very um committed to, but I also believe that where we're going to be well beyond my time working here is going to be a much better place and that I really do think that we're just building the foundation of that. Um, recognizing that there is so much uh mistrust that exists. And so we can't just be frustrated by it and do nothing. We have to take action. And I think, you know, whether these meet the mark, uh, time will tell. But I think these are the types of thoughtful, uh, meaningful strategic things that will help advance uh our learning and hopefully our actual uh advancement with trust in our community and our effectiveness that's connected to that.
Thank you.
And I get Nate and Madam Mayor going back to one point.
Kind of late and I still need to go and do public comment under eighteen.
Yeah, um, so, so my only point is, thing I'm bringing up is, it's just not you and your officers. It's us or the, 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 the future elected officials have to feel that accountability as well. That, that we have to learn from this data or take in this data and talk about this, this, the outcomes. And so what I might ask, and again, um, to think about, uh, is coming back with a plan and working with the uh, uh, mayor, Mayor Pro Tem or whoever it is on a process to where there's check-ins along the way so that we can see sort of what we're learning, where we're going, like on a quarterly basis or whatever it may be. I'll let the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem uh figure that out. Um, uh, as, as a way so that uh myself and the rest of the council can, can, you know, kind of see where this is going. Because this, we've got to own this thing. So that was my only comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember LaDesma. I, I just um wanted to, um, I've been listening to the, my fellow council members. Um, first of all, thank you for putting this together. I think um these are recommendations that are definitely going in the right direction for the transparency that uh we've been seeking. Um, I know it's going to take you a while. You do have um under the comprehensive organizational assessment and the data transparency portal, uh, you know, saw those go up for an RFP and glad you're, you're all set and um asking for our approval to get those out um and in the public. Um, and, and definitely want to work with you um on, on seeing the implementation of this. Um, I just, I just wanted to um comment a little bit on my brother's keeper. And um, you know, I, I've researched my brother's keeper and um the value of that. And there is um value for that uh, you know, implementation. And I think that there is a need to see a more robust um policy level. Um, it's not just the police department, actually. It's, it's across the board. Um, you know, policy level changes, you know, I, I tried to get a community workforce training agreement and um to help, you know, some of our um most vulnerable members of our community to get an opportunity to get a trade um and, and to be able to work um local. And that's, that's a component of my brother's keeper, successfully entering the workforce and to provide those opportunities. Um, and then, you know, something, some other components that we're working on is um getting a healthy start, entering school ready. Um, so we do have, I think, a good um, uh, you know, early childcare system. Uh, but I think we could do more. I think we could do more to help parents in uh our most um vulnerable areas of our community. You know, I've, I've canvassed the area. Um, I remember taking a month off, um, canvassing the area in, in Broderick and Bright during the day. And I'll tell you, it, it isn't um what, what I, I would, it, it's a challenging area to be walking through. Um, you know, there's, I think, a lot more than we, that we can do to help parents and to help children get access to early childcare education. And I, I don't, I don't know what we can do right now immediately, but I think we, we need to do a lot more. And then um getting, you know, getting kids um at the reading level for um grade three. I do know that um, you know, our teachers right now are overworked with COVID. Um, and there's uh just a lot of stress to help children. Um, and they don't, you know, it's not until recently they were allowing teachers aides to come back in to provide support to teachers. So I think we do have a, a, I think, a, a situation where children are falling behind. So I'm a little concerned about, you know, our um kindergartners, first and second graders and the support that the teachers need so that they can, so that we can achieve that milestone uh for our children. And uh for those that need graduate um from high school and be ready for college. I, I have um, you know, heard that there are some challenges um around those that are in the end of, um, that are, that have disabilities that have an IEP in order for them to be college ready and uh also participate in our home run program. So I'd like to be able to see what we can do, make accommodations in our home run program to, you know, help those youth who are not going to be able to, you know, maybe be college ready but workforce ready um and expand those opportunities. And I know this is not all related to you, but since my brother's keeper is somehow intersecting with this, those are some of the things that I'd like to see um here in our city, uh, to be able to, to accommodate that. And um so it may not be a direct conversation with you, Chief Strange, about it. But I think what happens is you'll end up inter- in, in, interacting with youth who um who we could be providing more support or individuals of the community who can benefit more from what we can do in our policy changes to provide them with support. Did you want her to, did you, I see you two take your mic off. I don't know if you wanted to say something.
I, I was only going to comment that I think when we think about the, the former MBK um alliance that, that was established here locally. Um, I think what we have is at least the, the straw man model that maybe will serve a good purpose as sort of a public policy advisory um type of thing. That not only does address issues that we're talking about with leasing, but also some of these other issues that I think really when we're, when we're having these discussions, we are talking about equity, we're talking about access. We're talking about uh all the same things because from a public safety leader perspective, I think those things are absolutely related to public safety. Um, you know, when there's disparities in access, then the interaction with multiple institutions can, can definitely fall apart uh and lead to interactions with the- Uh, and lead to interactions with the institution of policing. So. Um, I appreciate that this council is looking at things globally when it comes to even issues that start as a, as a conversation about policing.
Thank you. And, um. You know, and, and I also appreciate that you're implementing the independent review, um, and internal review system, um, for force incident reviews. I know that. It's been done internally. I know you've probably been doing a great job, um, but I also think, uh. You know, just, um. Looking at liability, you know, seeing how things have evolved and changed, you know, where we're at now to having that independent review. Um, is, is, I think. I think, I think it, I think it helps the department. Um, and, uh, so I think it's a great recommendation that you have here. So I, I appreciate all the work. That you've been putting into over, um, the last couple of years and. Getting to where you're at today. I know, I know it took some time and, and dialogue with, um. With your department, um, to get to where we're at today. Uh, so, um, with that, I think we've. Um, exhausted this. We're now going into midnight. Want to, I'll accept a motion to approve the recommendations.
I'll make the recommended, I'll move, excuse me, I'll move the recommended. Does Chief Strange have a?
Uh, I'm, I apologize because I don't think this got brought up earlier. Uh, there was a, a Rata memo on this. Uh, it, it's about the contracts and I just wanted to bring it up for the record. So it's about non-financial, non-scope or changes in the standard contract language. And what the request in that, uh, the change really with, um, what we're asking of you in the report is that you delegate authority to the city manager to approve these contracts. After those changes are agreed upon. Again, they're non-financial, non-scope related.
So with that Arata recommendation. If you're all okay, did we get a copy of that, Aaron? I thought Lori.
Yes, you did. It was in, it was in the memo, the first memo you got today.
The first memo? Okay. Make it after you all got a copy.
Yes.
Okay. So that's, that's what we're approving tonight.
Okay. So who was the first and second?
Councilmember Ledesma's first.
First and second?
Councilmember Ledesma's first and Councilmember Early second. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right, get to work.
And as a, as a side note, Madam Mayor, I think you wanted to. At least ask if there was any public comment on number eighteen.
Yes, I, um, would like to open up item eighteen for a public comment. Are there any requests? Uh, I see one request.
We have, uh, Maria.
Yes, Maria, you are allowed to speak now. Cause you're clear.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak, especially this late at night. Uh, regarding the crisis now, uh, model. I actually, uh, technically. Nonprofit and I actually provided a housing. To, uh, a person that was living at the river in winter and I brought him home. And provided him housing, uh, until, uh. And, uh, and actually had a, uh, uh. Responder here and got to see, uh, how the responders work. But unfortunately I agree that we need to expand, uh. Responders because they weren't available until eleven A M. So I had to wait until the responders were available to get the services. But that's the best, uh, uh, program, the best service that the city could have. So thank you for, uh, having that, uh, uh, Chief Strange and Karen that's gone now. Uh, and so I wanted to say that. I wanted to object and I'm sorry that Karen Larson. Larson is gone to, uh, housing the stabilization folks, uh, in woodland, which is. Good idea to drive, uh, all the way to woodland. The reason I object to that is that we've been fighting for some time to close down the juvenile facility. And they've been trying to think of all types of ideas to keep the juvenile facility up and running in order to keep. Uh, staff, uh, running that facility. They want jobs, uh. Keeping that facility going. And so, uh, there's no juveniles in that facility. Another thing is that we want someone that is getting stabilized. In a padded environment. Uh, what does Schmick do on Stockton Boulevard when they have, uh, uh, someone that needs to get stabilized? Do they put them in a, uh, jail? I don't think so. So I disagree with, uh, stabilizing people in woodland. Please do not lock up people in jail. That are having psychosis. Uh, some people, uh, and I'll tell you, I wish Karen had been here and Rob. Was here. I had my mini stroke, uh, and, and I didn't know I was having a mini stroke. And you could have thought that I was a madman. And so that is an example. That is an example of an actual, an actual mini stroke. And I didn't know that I was suffering the symptoms of mini stroke. Anyway, uh, thank you so much. Uh, for, uh, being up this late at night.
Right. I, any other requests to speak, Madam Clerk?
Uh, no, there is not.
Thank you so much. And, uh, now we'll move, um, to the council calendar.
Good evening. Just quickly, just a reminder that, um, City Hall is going to be closed from, uh, December twenty fourth through January third. We'll be, we'll have. Uh, a, a call center at South River Road to take calls from residents, but, um, we won't have staff working during that time generally. Thank you.
And I also think you'll be open for, um, vaccinate. Sorry, testing, COVID testing.
Yes, it will be staffed by healthy Yolo, um, downstairs. But no, we won't have, um, generally, we won't have staff, um, serving in the building.
Okay. Um, city manager report?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. So tonight, uh, if. You don't mind hearing some good news, I'd actually like to invite our Parks and Rec Director, Tracy Michael, um, for some breaking news. For the council.
Yay.
My manager's report, Tracy.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Um, late yesterday, uh, we heard from State Park's Office of Grants and Local Services that the city of West Sacramento. Was one of a hundred and twelve cities selected statewide to be awarded. A grant funding from the Prop sixty-eight statewide park program. The grant funding is approximately seven point eight million dollars for the expansion and renovation of Westacre Park. Which will include a lot of really important, um, and great amenities for the community, including. A completely renovated and expanded skate park. A new bicycle pump track, a splash pad, which will be the first water feature. In the north part of town. A new playground with safety surfacing and shade structures, a covered picnic area. Removal of the existing vacant warehouse buildings that the school district has right on the corner. Um, and also, um, new athletic fields, a public restroom. And then a lot of other safety and beautification features preserving, uh, you know, all of the existing mature landscaping, but adding new native plantings. Um, new fencing adjacent to the residential, um, homes. On one side of the park at the request of the property owners as part of our community engagement process. And then also, um, public art on it. So we're, we're really excited about this when, um, we know how. Um, how much the community is looking forward to these improvements. We do have. Some steps to take with the school district, some modifications requested by State Parks to our joint use agreement. So we'll need to be working on that. In early twenty twenty-two, but, um, we had such an extensive community engagement process. Um, um, internally, we had a lot of staff that worked on it and a great turnout from our community. So thank you to everyone who worked on that effort.
Especially Tracy.
Window, two years to get it done. So.
Yay.
Sorry, Ariana, you're still on.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you to Tracy for all the work on that. And that concludes our report. Thank you.
Thank you. That's excellent news. I appreciate that. Um, city attorney report?
Nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. A staff direction from city council members. And, uh, none. Get your agenda item, request by council, none. And I'll accept a motion to adjourn. So move. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Was that a call up and, um, Ledesma?
I'll call, yes.
Okay. Um, City Councilman Ledesma?
Aye.
Councilmember Akala?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. All right. Thank you, everybody. I don't see you around. Merry Christmas to all, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Take care. Bye bye.